A special planning commission meeting, City of North Miami, Thursday, September 18th, 2025. We are beginning at 7:03. Madam Secretary, please have a roll call of the members.
Chairman Ernst.
Present.
Vice Chair McDermade.
Present.
Commissioner H.
Present.
Commissioner Blumier is probably running late. She did say she was going to be here. Commissioner Seifried.
Present.
Commissioner Pierre.
Present.
Commissioner Bob. And our alternate Commissioner Besson. We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you very much. Let's all please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, do we have any changes or amendments to the agenda? Debbie, can you hear us?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. And next in Communications, we're asking, are we on schedule for the next planning meeting to be October 7th, 2025?
Yes, sir. However, at this time, we do not anticipate any items being ready for that meeting.
Okay, very good. Looking ahead to November 3rd, I believe that would probably be the next date. I will not be available. That is a, I'll be smack dab in the middle of a project, so.
We typically don't have that on the November 3rd.
I'm sorry, the 4th.
Cynthia, can you confirm?
November 4th.
Do you have that on November 3rd?
No, it would be November 4th.
I'm pulling up my calendar. September, October, November, it would be November 4th.
Yes. Please make a note that I will not be available.
Chairman, you won't be available for that night?
No, ma'am.
No?
Thank you. Do we have any continued public hearings?
No, sir.
None? Okay, very good. Before we get into the public hearing, both items tonight that we're hearing are.
I'm sorry, were the minutes done?
Yes, you forgot the minutes, sir.
I didn't see it on my. Yep, I'm sorry. Skipped right over it. I'm not in a hurry or anything. I apologize. So we're asking for a motion to approve the minutes of June 26th.
Still move.
A motion by Mr. McDermade, seconded by Mrs. Seifried. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve passes unanimously. Okay, I apologize again. Get back to the continued public hearings. We said there are none. And going down to the public hearings. These are both, as I started to mention, are quasi judicial. And our board attorney will read into record what entails the quasi judicial procedures.
Okay. These rules apply to applications on specific parcels of land like zoning map amendments, special exceptions, variances, and conditional use requests. The commission will sit like a court, hence the term quasi judicial, reviewing the facts presented at the hearing, applying the adopted rules as explained by staff in the staff report and verbally. Commission members can make site visits but must disclose the evidence upon which they intend to rely from that visit. Commission members will disclose at the beginning of the hearing whether they have had communications with individuals on behalf of the applicant or otherwise, including who the communication was with and what the topic of the discussion was. All persons intending to speak to the commission will be sworn by the clerk. The staff will make a presentation. The commission may ask questions. The applicant will make a presentation, including expert witnesses if any. The commission may ask questions. When the public hearing is opened, the public can make comments on the application, limited to two minutes each. Citizen testimony must be fact based, not opinion. The commission may ask questions and the applicant's attorney, if any, may ask questions. That is cross examination. Members of the public can decline to be cross examined. Staff may present additional testimony to supplement or rebut arguments made. The commission deliberates based on the evidence presented. The commission's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence, meaning based on the record, staff presentations, expert presentations, and fact based comments by citizens according to the standards for approval set forth in the city code. The commission may approve, deny, or continue the item. While staff previously read into the records, into the record emails or emailed comments, since these are not competent substantial evidence, for example, not sworn testimony subject to cross examination, the commission's decision cannot be based on what is contained in the emails or mailed comments, but they can be used to identify issues and help identify sources of information that do contain competent substantial evidence upon which a decision can be based. Lastly, we ask each of you to treat this proceeding with respect and proper decorum. No calling out, interrupting speakers, or disrupting the proceeding. Please give this proceeding the same dignity and respect as if you were in court. Disruptions are prohibited and enforceable pursuant to the city code. Please also silence your cell phones. Thank you.
Very good, sir. At this point, two other issues we need to get through. First of all, disclosure before, with the commission, anyone, having anybody on the panel, having discussions with anybody that's party to the petitioner or has had any kind of interaction or spoken with anyone that is speaking tonight or has any knowledge that they imparted to you. Mr. Seifried?
No, I've had no communication with anybody on this project.
Very good, Mr. Bob.
I'll tell you that I ride my bicycle to work most of the time and go right by that property. And so I don't call that an onsite inspection because I didn't stop to go around the block and walk through the site, but I pass it quite frequently.
Sure. Okay. And while you're on that subject, yes, I'm familiar with the property because I've driven by it many times just because it's like either a shortcut or something that I've had business in that area and I'm familiar with what the property looks like. But I've had no discussions with anybody about it. Mr. McDermade, sir?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Due to a conflict of interest, I'm going to have to recuse myself for this particular item.
Okay. So noted. Counselor, are you, you were aware of this?
Yes, Mr. McDermade's already submitted his conflict form. But now, if you'd like, you can call the alternate board member to take his seat.
Can you make your mic? Okay, buddy. Mr. Besson, you may come forward, sir. Just for procedural purposes, once this item is done, Mr. McDermade can come back.
At that time, right, since he doesn't have a conflict for the second item, I'll go and get him.
All right. And also, Madam Secretary, make note that Mr. Blumberg has arrived.
Welcome.
Hope everything is okay. All set. We have just finished reading that these two items are quasi judicial. So we went over that procedure. And while you arrived, I'm going to ask you if you've had any communications regarding this item with anyone.
No.
Prior to this meeting. Okay, very good.
I had a discussion yesterday with Councilman Burns and staff with regards to the NROs. And it may have, we were looking at this project, but nothing definite, but just in general talking about the old NROs that we.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, we'll probably have further discussion with staff regarding that. It is noted in the item. Mr. Bob, I've talked to you already, sir? And you have no? And Mr. Pierre?
No.
Dr. Besson?
No previous communication on this matter.
Very good. So at this point, I'll ask if anyone wishing to speak on this matter, after I've read it in the article and we've heard the, and heard the comments from the petitioner, I ask that you all stand and take an oath since if you are planning to speak before this panel. Anyone wishing to speak before this panel must stand and be sworn in prior to speaking. Counselor, are you all set there, sir?
All right. Okay. Do you all swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence that you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Bear in mind that, Madam Secretary, we will do it again for the second item.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the item into the record. It is PC 17-112. It is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving an application for a conditional use permit and substantially the attached form for a proposed development consisting of a 10-unit townhouse project on two parcels of real property located at 1330 Northeast 10th Avenue and a vacant parcel located in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Northeast 131st Street and Northeast 10th Avenue, identified with the Miami Dade County folio numbers as follows. and totaling approximately 0.52 acres. In accordance with Article 3, Division 4, Sections 3-402 through 3-407, Article 4, 4-310 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please? And good evening once again, Debbie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. For the record, Debbie Love, Development Services Director. Let me share my screen with you.
Now we see you. We do see you.
The item before you is a request for a conditional use permit. As you noted, it is located at 1330 Northeast 10th Avenue. The request, it consists of a request for nine floating bonus units. The parcel size is 15,000 square feet or just 0.34 acres. One of the parcels is vacant. The other has a single family home. It is currently zoned R2, which is actually low density residential, not medium density residential. My apologies. And it's also located in the former NRO. As you all know, during the conference of plan, we decided to do away with the NRO because we believed that it was not the appropriate mechanism and was having a deleterious effect on the single family neighborhoods. However, we did have quite a few applications already in progress at that time. This was one of them. There is only one more after this that is vested for the interim. So with that said, under the current designation, it would only be allowed to have about one house, essentially only this parcel. But because it's in the interim, it gave them the opportunity to build up to 90 feet and 90 dwelling units per acre. I mean, yeah, with the CUP. Now that would equate to 47 units that this property could accommodate. And again, it could be up to 10 stories. So what you have before you is a two-story, 10-unit townhouse development. They're in two buildings, again, two stories. There's five units per building and the height is 24.6 feet, which is actually a little bit more than 10 feet lower than the height that is actually allowed in the R2. They are going to be providing 16 off-street spaces, and that meets all of our parking standards. It does have sustained design. They're pursuing LEED, grade certification. Once again, we have 100% Florida native vegetation requirement. Their lot coverage is 21%. And they could actually max it out at 80%. So this is well below that. And that area is going to give them more open space, stormwater protection, reducing of the heat pattern effect. Now, the economic impact of this is 35 direct and indirect jobs as well as $3.7 million in wages during that two-year construction period. It does anticipate about $0.3 million annually and add the warm taxes and the one-time $95,000 impact improvement fees. Now, the CUP conditions are as follows. First of all, it has to go to DRC. After this goes to city council for the approval of the conditional use permit, they will have to submit for a DRC site plan approval. That's where we'll get into the real, really gritty of landscaping, placement, all of those other issues. Because this right now is the conceptual site plan. They will be required to construct and maintain a, I'm sorry, that should be a six-foot wide sidewalk along the northeast 10th Street frontage. They will have to underground all their utilities. They'll have to provide their LEED certification prior to they get CO. And they will have to maintain their sustainability commitments and their low-impact development activities that they say they would be doing. So the next steps is this is anticipating, intuitively, going to city council on October 14th. Then, as I said, they'll come back, submit their DRC site plan review. So this project will then go to city council for site plan review after DRC approval. So they'll have to, there's a lot of details, as you all know, at the DRC level that are where the rubber meets the road. And then after that piece, they'll go to the building permit. And then there's another set of reviews that is completed by zoning, landscaping, so that it's a very robust review process. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. I do know that the.
And we lost her. It's the end of the presentation.
Debbie, if we've lost you, if you can hear me, I'm going to go ahead and ask the. Folks, thank you for the patience. Hi, how are you?
My apologies.
That's all right. As long as you can hear. There you are. Good to see you again. Okay, is there anything you want?
As I said, that was the end of my presentation. The applicant and their team is here, and I know they have a presentation view as well. I am here for any questions as well as the input.
All right. If you can introduce the petitioner, you can come forward, please, and start your presentation. Good evening, Counselor. How are you, sir? Good to see you again. Yes. Nope.
That one? Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
And please state your name.
The hard stuff. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, alternate member. I'm Joseph Geller of Greenspoon Martyr LLP, and we're here as attorneys representing the petitioner. With me tonight is the owner's representative, Mr. Samir Jamie Akpas. And also with us tonight is an architect for the project, Mr. Norberto Loyano. Mr. Loyano, if you'd give him a wave. From Madsen Designs in Boca Raton. We're very appreciative of your hearing us this evening, and we'll try to be as brief as we can so we don't keep you here too long. So let me begin by, besides saying good evening, by saying to all the members of the board, I guess my first, I have a question just of counsel, if I might. Counsel, has the staff report been accepted into evidence?
Well, nothing's been moved into evidence at this point, but.
We would request that this time that the staff report be accepted into evidence.
All right. And that's the report that we have in front of us. Is that correct, sir?
From Ms. Love, yes.
I believe that's standard anyway. Is that correct, Ms. Love? Whatever staff report that you presented us, it's the same?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I say that because frankly, in and of itself, the staff report is competent substantial evidence, and the fact that it recommends approval is something that is or should be significant to this body, although, of course, I defer on that to your counsel and to the city's counsel. I think most of the members of this board are aware that a project on this site was presented, I think it's a little over a year ago now. But this is a different project in a lot of ways, and I want to take the opportunity briefly to walk you through it. I'm not an architect. I'm not testifying. I'm here to present some arguments to you, and I'll do that. I'll then defer to the architect so that you can ask him, he can present to you the specifics, the architectural facts about this project. What he says is something that you can consider as evidence. I'm only providing argument. I don't give you evidence. That said, what your professional staff gives you is evidence, and you can take that into account, and I hope you will in making your decision. So let me run through quickly what is, I want to focus on what's different. This is still 10 units. It's still 10 townhomes. This project is ownership. These townhomes will be subject to some kind of presumably a condominium, could be perhaps some form of homeowners association. But this is not rental property. It's not designed as rental property. And as your staff told you, this is a long way from final approval. I'm hoping that you will grant the conditional use permit to allow us to go forward and that the city council will do the same. But after that comes detailed site plan. We're not here on a site plan tonight. And even after site plan is approved, they have to submit building permits, and that's subject to a very rigorous vetting process. So this is step one on what is frankly, a fairly lengthy road. This is under the former neighborhood NRO. Understand that under that, as you heard, they could be building, I think it was something like 80 units? 47 units, I think, correct. 10 stories high and 80% lot coverage where they have 21. So this is very, very, very scaled down from what could be asked for on this site. In addition, compared to the application previously, although it's still 10 units, I don't know if it was clear last time that it was going to be ownership or not. It's less space for a number of reasons. The previous design has been changed substantially. There's simply less space. They shrunk what's being built for a couple of reasons, and there are a couple of changes. One of them is there had been some parking issues previously, that there had been some kind of stacked parking. That's gone. As you heard, this project fully complies. It provides all the parking that's needed. There is no stacked parking, and all the parking that's required is here as off. Well, it's in the area of the development. They have enough parking onsite to cover everything the city code asks. In fact, by the way, no variance of any kind is being sought here. None. There is no variance. This is being, that doesn't mean you're required to grant it because conditional use is within your purview to say yea or nay. But it does mean that they're not asking you to vary your codes other than what's permitted under the former NRO to give this conditional use permit. In addition, one of the reasons that the units are smaller, that they've been shrunk, was to provide more internal space for, among other things, a pedestrian walkway inside. Before, that really didn't exist. Now, in terms of amenities, that does. The landscaping of this project is significantly different. We have a landscape architect engaged. His recommendations, findings, et cetera, can be presented by our architect, Mr. Loyano of Madsen Designs. And there's a lot of shrubbery, a lot of ground cover. The trees are certainly an issue, and I understand why neighbors are concerned about them. There are three large trees, including a very large specimen oak, that have to be removed. It's not that the developer especially wants to do that, but what's called the, there's a technical term for it, but the root network, as the landscape architect was explaining to me, as you'll hear, is such because it's not just where the tree stands. The roots from those three trees are underneath the whole thing. And you just can't move forward with any kind of really new development there and have those trees stay because you'll kill the trees no matter what you do. You'll be taking out parts of their network. Now, keep in mind, this is only a two-story project. Each one. Each one an individual townhome. Each one of the 10 units is a two-story individual townhome, so these are not little cheap units. We recognize the issue with the trees. The developer has put forward a landscape plan that calls for 24 new trees. We know about the three large specimens that are being replaced, that have to be, but 24 new trees, and they're each, I think it's, there's a technical term for these kinds of trees and the canopy that they will ultimately have. There is, I believe, approximately 3,400, is it? Yeah, but square feet in currently? Yeah. Of what exists currently. Each of these 24 trees at maturity will have a 500-foot canopy. So, square foot. So, as you'll see, now, you know, trees do take a little while to grow, but they reach maturity, these trees are expected to reach maturity, I heard a little snickering in the back, of course, in seven years. Not tomorrow. We're not trying to play fast and loose with that, but my understanding is that at three years, they will provide as much canopy as the three large trees provide now. At three years, these 24 trees will equal it, and at seven years, there'll be something like four times as much canopy as is provided now. That's the 24 trees that are shown on ours. It's not really a site plan. It's a preliminary. But tonight, different than what was submitted to the city staff to review, the developer has indicated that because we understand there is concern, they're committing to put an additional six trees over the 24 that are shown. So the total would be 30 new trees, each providing at maturity, at seven years, 500 square feet. And when I say that at three years, it will equal what's there, when you add in those six additional trees, it'll be probably in the neighborhood, I'll defer to the, to the architect, somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a quarter to two and a half years, somewhere in that, before it matches what's there today. The developer doesn't have to do that, but they're proffering six additional trees for a total of 30 because they want this site to be beautiful, and that will be, I mean, they have to sell it, and that's in addition to all the shrubs and ground cover that they're looking to provide. So, we think that this is a much better project. I haven't mentioned, you have some renderings here, you have a brand-new architect from a very respected firm up in Boca Raton. It's just nicer-looking. There's just no other way to put it. It's more articulated. It's more attractive. It is a low, not terribly encroaching, lots of open space, almost 80% open space. The 21 instead of the 80 they could go to. This is really to the eye and also to the people who will be living in it and around it. A very different project because the developer, who took their time coming back here, made substantial changes, went out and got a much better architect that's presenting a really nice project, a nice piece of work, and if you give me just a moment to make sure I didn't miss anything that we think is important here. Oh, yes. There is one more thing that's very important, and I'm glad I stopped to check my notes for a moment. I've seen some comment, to be quite frank, about the fact that the developer has not yet conducted community meetings. There's a reason why it hasn't happened yet. We're hoping that this body will provide a preliminary approval for this project, but as you heard, it's at least a month before it's going to go to the city commission. If there were some huge problem, we might need to address that. We hope there's not, but we might need to address that before we get to the community hearing. But I'm here to tell you on the record that it is the developer's plan to hold at least one community meeting, maybe more if needed, but to hold at least one meeting with the community, to hear what the community has to say, to allow input to be provided, to let these neighbors come forward if they have suggestions which perhaps could be incorporated, and that that will take place prior to whenever this project goes to the city council, whether that's next month or whatever happens with it. They value input from the neighborhood, and they're committed to really listening to what the neighbors have to say. At the end, I'll close and turn it over to Mr. Loyano, the architect, that just saying, you heard all the things that could happen on this site under the former overlay, none of which is being proposed. I understand that it's a, there's one house there now, but as you see all around, there is a need for housing in our community. People are desperate for places that they can live that are near where they work. This is low-impact. One of the parcels is currently a vacant parcel. There's nothing on it, and certainly there could be some development on the vacant parcel. So we, as I turn it over to the architect, we humbly ask you to consider what we've put forward, recognize how hard the developer has worked to make this not just a better project, but a good project, and to adopt and/or recommend support of the conditional use permit, the very first step in a long journey. With that, I'll turn it over for testimony to the architect, Mr. Loyano, and of course, as your counsel will tell you, you can feel free to ask any questions of him, or for that matter, if you have at this time or when he's done any questions of me, I'm happy to respond as well.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Before you introduce the architect, Debbie, I need a clarification from you with regards to the process of them moving this forward. Does the city arborist have any input into the decision regarding the plot of land where the trees are located? Is she a party to the approval process?
Yes, sir. But the conceptual, at the conceptual level, primarily we look at, does it have native Is it well-designed? Where they really get involved is at the DRC level. That's where they look at the trees that they propose. Do they have the right percentage? Are they replacing the canopy properly? They may end up having to pay mitigation fees. So again, that is where we talk about more detailed review at the DRC level.
Okay, very good. And she's a part of that, correct?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right. And then the other, other point, you mentioned that it's a vacant parcel, but now we're talking two parcels of land, correct, staff?
Yes, sir.
Both, both those parcels, I believe, have a house on it that is, the existing structures are on, in place on those two parcels of land. Am I not correct?
Yes, sir. One is vacant, one has a house on it.
Okay. But, but for technical purposes, that is, that house that's vacant currently occupies that parcel of land, which is also a part of where the trees are that we are discussing or will be discussing down the road. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sir. My apologies.
The parcel of land that the trees are on has a house on it right now that's vacant. Is that correct?
A house that's vacant?
Well, we just said there's a house that's vacant.
There's a house on it. You have a vacant lot.
Right?
And then you have another lot that has a house on it.
I thought there were two parcels of land, or two houses.
Bear with me just a second, sir.
Okay. I am. Go ahead.
Can you see? Hold on just a second. Can you see the screen?
Yes, I'm looking at the same thing on my, in my booklet.
That's right. You see, you see that one, the vacant lots?
Got it.
You can see the property lines?
Now I see it.
The dark one?
At first, I did not see that dark line. My apologies.
Yes. No worries, sir.
All right.
So it is definitely, a lot of, you'll, you'll see that there's a lot of trees there?
Yes.
And they're going to be mitigating whatever they have to remove, and one of the things that we look at when we are looking at design is, do you have to remove the trees to accommodate the developments? And then, as it gets on into the major design and review through DRC, we look at how many they're removing, how much canopy they're removing, and then how much they're replacing, and is that adequate? Does it meet our code? And if they require paid mitigation? But that will be determined at the DRC review level.
Okay. That answers my question. Mr. Geller, if you go ahead, thank you for letting me ask that question of staff. If we can hear from the architect now, please have him come forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Loyano.
Debbie, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening. If I can have your name and address, sir, for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Norberto Loyano with Madsen Design. You said the address, too, right?
Is his microphone on?
Yeah.
Yeah. 416 Southeast Fifth Street, Delray Beach, Florida. Well, here we are to present our project. I have to admit, you know, when the developer approached us and I started studying the potential of, of this property, I immediately, you know, obviously went to the code and communicated with him. You know, previously, he had the, the project doing by somebody else, and, and I said, are you aware that you can do nine floors, 10 floors, and 40-something units? And he immediately said, I am, but I don't want to do that. Because I want to do something pretty that the community can, you know, enjoy. I want to be not only the project that I do here, it's my vision to continue working in, in this town. And I was obviously, you know, surprised because that's not the normal. The normal is, yeah, give me 50 units, you know, even though you can say 47, but developers are that way, you know that. This person was, you know, totally different, and I was really surprised to, to hear that. So with that being said, you know, again, we inherited this project, and we believe, like the counsel said, you know, that we believe that we improved significantly the image. Other aspects, too, you know, we had a situation where parking was in a manner that was stacking, you know, like two cars here and there. It wasn't a pedestrian walkway to access the units. You know, we provided all of that. We mitigate the, the fact that those parking were stacking right now, and I'm going to go to, and now you can see that that is no longer the case. If we're going to talk about height, you know, we are at 24.6, where we could go 35. And again, you know, this is part of the, the vision of the developer, my client, that he wanted something with, you know, low impact and nice, and I believe that we accomplished that. Well, you know, it's not too much to say. Landscape, yeah, we can, we can, obviously, we, we study, you know, we are not here to attempt something that is not going to pass DRC. All the calculations are there. The canopy is going to be not only replaced, but significantly enhanced. So I'm open to questions if anybody has. Thank you so much.
At this point, if the commission...
I have a question.
Well, I wanted to go ahead and have a public hearing. Chief, is that okay if we?
Yeah, go ahead.
And let's, let's move to the public hearing first, and then we'll reserve our comments after we hear everybody's points that they wish to present to us. Bear in mind, what was spoken to you about presenting with facts and, and please have no comments from the audience while you speak, or ask for any reactions from any of your neighbors that are here to speak on the issue. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, they come forward and let, let you know also that we're going to allow two minutes for your presentation, two minutes and two minutes only. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Public hearing is now open. And the same, safe time, one person could go to one mic, and the other person could go to the other mic, and we can not be delayed. Ma'am, I'll let you go first. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Katrina Morris. My address is 4130 Lybeyer Avenue, Coconut Grove, Florida, 33133. I am not one of your constituents. It is nice to be here in a smaller venue where I feel like I can really be heard. A neighbor did call me and tell me that there were 200-year-old oaks that were at risk. I know that you know that mature root systems mitigate water much better than any new root system. Furthermore, I find it, this property was purchased, I looked up on Zillow, for $350,000 a few years ago. I, we run into this thing in Coconut Grove where the developers purchase a piece of land and then act surprised that there are 200-year-old trees on them. I don't know what due diligence they're supposed to do, but these trees did not grow overnight. They knew what was there, and they are going in with the understanding that they can work a deal. They can work a deal to get rid of these trees. And this is why I show up at something like this for 200-year-old trees because there's because there's nobody who can advocate for those trees. And I think that they deserve respect. They do a lot more for your city than a building will do in the long run, in the long run. I know tomorrow we need bucks. But if you save these trees, in the long run, it will do more for your city than the buildings will do. In the short run, maybe the buildings. Maybe you can function with money. But in the long run, the trees will save you and you will be happy that you made that decision.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Andrew Russell, 1090 Northeast 132nd Street. Good evening, neighbors, commissioners, and members of the planning commission. At our last meeting, Commissioner's Lemire motion, seconded by Commissioner Seifried, to deny this project was unanimous, six to zero. With clear conditions, the developer should hold two meetings with neighbors, retain the three existing trees, and reevaluate the design accordingly. But today, revised plan posted only two days ago leaves out the two most vital elements, the community and the trees. No neighborhood meetings occurred. And instead of saving the oaks, the plan still calls for destroying three trees, each over 200 years old, as well as a lovely home that is a fixture of the neighborhood. The developer cites Section 52304 to justify this. But this section prioritizes preserve preservation, environmental value, and strict mitigation, all of which these oaks meet. They provide stormwater absorption, air purification, carbon storage, wildlife habitat, canopy cover that cools urban heat. More than that, they are living landmarks, trees that predate the city and define the neighborhood's character. Mitigation is impossible. The plan states new planting at an arbitrary location chosen by the city. This can't replace culture, ecological, or historical values of 200-year-old oaks. The new plan worsens this by offering mostly pavement onsite and just a small token patch of grass conflicting with Section 5802H and risking our Tree City USA status. Accepting this as reevaluated would ignore your unanimous vote, dismiss your conditions, and damage community trust. I urge you honor your motion, respect the neighbor's voice, and protect these living monuments. They are not just trees.
Thank you, sir.
They are history heritage in the heart of North Miami. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Sean Frydel, 1035 Northeast 133rd Street. Respectfully, Mr. Geller, this isn't your community. It's ours. You don't live in Irons Manor. 21% coverage, 30 trees, better tree canopy, impossible. Last July, this same developer came to the planning commission with a poor design, a bad fit for the community. You recommended they keep the three very old and large oak trees and have two community meetings. They will keep zero trees and have and have had zero community meetings. This design is even worse, only one way in or out. Who would be comfortable with cars simply backing out of their parking space or trying to turn around that can ram into your front door or your full-height window? There is no turnaround space for cars. Their traffic study is three years old and is so inaccurate, it contradicts itself. People blow through North people blow through Northeast 10th Ave, run stop signs, fly through roundabouts. This property is is the corner of a roundabout, building so close to that corner, it's more accidents waiting to happen. And the city does nothing about traffic easing. Two days ago, two days ago, there was a horrible accident on Northeast 10th Ave, exactly two blocks from this property, an overturned SUV, cars totaled, people injured. These developers have had the time to do what's right. They squeezed in under the NRO. That was shut down for a reason. They have shown they are bad architects, will be bad landlords and bad neighbors. They don't even want to meet us. Just vote no. No continuation, no recommendations, no tabling, just no. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Hello. Thank you for for listening to me. Deborah Davies, 1165 Northeast 127th Street. I'm gonna repeat some issues, but they're important. The developer is bringing back this project, which was shelved in the summer of 2024 after the local community presented serious objections as of now to it. This is a single-family home on almost half an acre of land with three 200-year-old oak trees, including one with a hawk's nest in it. The plans and the agenda do not show the trees, as we've heard, but they I do not think they can legally be cut down. So what's going on? This is a major environmental concern. This time around, there has been no community meeting about this, which should have happened before this meeting and was they were already asked to do that. And also, the all the notices were sent out late. Since the NRO was lifted for this area some time ago, the proposal does not meet current zoning. And there must be a really reasonable limit to how long a developer can keep claiming that a project can be grandfathered in under an old NRO, which the city removed expressly to preserve the single-family nature of the neighborhood. And I must say, Ms. Love was a proponent of that very strongly. In any case, with or without the NRO, the city has other rules that must be followed, although this commission and the city council have made a habit of ignoring them. I'm talking about Section 3-405A of the city code in which subsections 5, 7, and 9 prohibit development that will have adverse impacts on adjacent properties on the community character of a neighborhood. So I hope this planning commission will take its responsibility seriously in this case and apply the city's rules as they are written. We need housing, but we already have many huge buildings that you all know about that are being built and have been built that are nowhere near filled at this point. So I don't see where the housing is the important issue here over preserving the trees and our and our health of the community. Okay, if we are to preserve this area in the heart of the city as a single-family neighborhood, we cannot keep making exceptions to the rules until it is dotted with large, noncompliant structures that destroy the community character of the neighborhood exactly what Section 3-405A prohibits. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. Tatiana Perez, 1035 Northeast 133rd Street. I live two blocks from this development. My sewer backs up every other month. Now they want to add 30 bathrooms to the failing sewer system on one lot. We have parking problems in our neighborhood already. Now you want to add 40 bedrooms with only 10 assigned parking spots. All of this development just brings problems without much benefit. Where are the rental tax dollars to renovate the water plant? My water bill keeps going up and still no renovation. Why do we have traffic jams for blocks on 125th Street? From West Dixie Highway, it takes me 15 to 20 minutes to get to Biscayne Boulevard. I've been here for 15 years. I used to love our quiet bedroom community, and it has been slowly changing. But you can help stop the bleeding. Save North Miami, save Irons Manor, and vote no. Thank you.
If there's anyone else after the lady has approached the forum, you can go ahead and take the other stand so we can go right to you after she finishes. Good evening. Name and address, please.
My name is Jennifer Clark. I'm at 965 Northeast 130th Street. My property is directly behind this proposed development. I recently escaped Coconut Grove because of all the overbuilding of townhomes. I came here, bought that house, thought this is the perfect neighborhood for me. And here we are again. It's all starting all over again. Trees are being cut down. You're building giant rental apartments. And I'm wondering why? Why does this keep happening? I also didn't receive proper notice. I have not received. I've lived here for a year and I have not received proper notice of these meetings. And I'm wondering if you allow this to be built, how does that protect the privacy of the two properties that abut this development, this proposed development? That it's two-level townhomes will be looking right into my yard and my neighbor's yard.
Okay. Anything else you want to add? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Give it a few more seconds to ponder. If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. I will not open the panel yet. The petitioner has a chance to review any of the evidence that you just heard from from the public. I recognize you.
I'm gonna be extremely brief, Mr. Chair. We respect these citizens. We respect their efforts to come out here and be heard. I've put on the record that if this project is gonna be scheduled for the city commission, as was suggested, we have committed some pointed out that we had not had those public hearings. But we've put on the record we're gonna have at least one, maybe more, before this gets to the city commission. We want to meet with these citizens. We will meet with these citizens. We're gonna afford them the opportunity. We're gonna hear what they have to say. They raise some interesting points, and I'm not here to argue with them. I am here to tell you that your staff has pointed out that most of these issues, such as specifically tree mitigation, we're offering six more than required. You know, there's a 25% increase in what's required. But if it develops a DRC that we need to do more, including the possibility of paid mitigation, we're open to that. So this is a process. This is the first step. As your staff has told you, it will be thoroughly reviewed at DRC. It will be back in front of you for site plan approval on the specifics of it. And that's all before actual building permit plans are submitted. This project might not go forward. There's a lot still to be covered. But tonight, as just concept plans, when it's not 10 stories but two, when it's not 47 units but 10, when it's not 80% coverage but 21, all of these things it could be, we simply ask you, let us move to the next step. We will meet with these citizens. We'll hear what they have to say before we even ask conditional use from the city commission. And there's still site plan, and there's still permit review. Just let us begin the path. And if down the road, you or the commission decides otherwise, you have every opportunity. But let us move forward. Let us meet with these citizens. Let us present tonight just conceptually and all these issues that we've talked about, such as tree mitigation and coverage and what can be done and what could or should be done. There's plenty of time down the road on this to hear all of those things. So we humbly ask for you to let us take the first step on a long road. And again, if there are any questions as you move forward, myself or the architect would be happy to address them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Geller. Just a quick question to Ms. Love. You can hear me.
I have cancer.
Yes. There was a point brought up in public comment regarding the fact several people noted that we had turned this down roughly a year ago, I believe, or less. And that there was evidently can you clarify that that what was mentioned was that meeting, part of the part of it being turned down was that we had asked that the trees not be removed and also the fact that public hearings would be set, at least two meetings be set. Is this correct based on on what was recorded from that meeting?
That is my understanding. But this is a because this is a different project. They would need to go through this process. And they should have met with the public ahead of time because this is one of the things we always tell them. Please meet not only with your councilperson and the mayor and other councilmembers, but also to meet with the public. It is now up to you all to say, you will move you forward or we will not move you forward. And that's where we go from here.
I understand. I just needed to find out if, in fact, what we heard wasn't was true with regards to the meetings with the public and and also the resolve the issue with the trees. So I'm gonna go ahead and open this to the other members of the commission for comment. I'm gonna start with you, Mr. Bob, down in the front.
Good evening. So I have a few concerns after hearing the presentation. So I'll just go through them. The first one that comes to mind is the the parking spaces. 10 homes, but only 16 parking spaces, if if I'm correct there. So my concern with that would just be, you know, homes that have multiple cars, guests, overflow. Where is that gonna go? And that kind of looks at the entire project on a whole, right? And then the main concern that I have is the true commitment to having the community involved. And I say that because, you know, recommendations were provided previously as far as getting the community engaged and getting their feedback. And, you know, today, we we haven't heard of any of that taking place. You know, I think a lot of the concerns that have been raised could have been addressed in the plan prior to this meeting had community meetings been held. And I think, to me, that's a red flag. I do question the intent and the true desire to work with the neighboring community, right? And then when you're talking about the community, this sort of project, how, you know, you look at a neighborhood's character and the goals of it. And my question is, a project like this, you know, how it fits into it? Especially when you're talking about the trees, how long they've been there, the impact on the drainage system. Those are a few things that that kind of speak out to me. And then just as far as access, you know, if you're coming off a roundabout, going into that property, you know, if you have, well, first off, there's already a lot of traffic. And then if you have units that have multiple cars, if you have guests, I mean, where are they parking? What what's kind of the plan for that? And honestly, I kind of feel like this presentation is a little bit premature simply because, you know, there's no community meetings that have been held. And and that's really kind of what I go back to. I believe in preserving the environment and because it gives the neighborhood and the surrounding area a certain character and also the benefits. And, you know, it doesn't seem like it's been taken into account at a to a level that at least myself, that I feel comfortable with. You know, you're giving up a tree that has deep roots that have been that's been around, you know, decades on decades for trees that will, you know, sprout and be functional in, you know, seven years, right? And so what happens in the meantime? So that's really just my view on it. I'm not in support of this project. And another thing that came to mind for me is the privacy concerns, you know, as far as the vision, the the sightlines of those occupants in those units because what's being done as far as a landscaping buffer for the privacy of those adjacent residents, right? So so those are just my views. I have nothing else to to add at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Chair recognizes Mr. Pierre.
Thank you. I share many of the same concerns as Mr. Bob. One of my biggest questions is regarding the tree. One of my biggest questions is regarding the tree. I'm not sure who to ask this, but if, let's say whoever owns the property now wanted to cut it down, could they, or?
I'm not quite clear on that, whether or not that can happen. I know that it has to be certain situations where it would be, if it was dead or a hazard or whatever, probably staff or Ms. Love, can you, do you have an answer to that, or can council give us an answer on that? A legal opinion, Jennifer? Or-
If I may-
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to just make the point that they typically, if you are, you have beautiful specimen trees, and this was just a single-family home, and the folks wanted to just cut the tree down for whatever reason on their private property, we would, our requirements are that they have to prove why it has to be removed. They are healthy, there is not root damage going into the plumbing or the building, and so we would take a look at that. But in this case, it's a little bit different because they are redeveloping the property. And so we still are not happy with the oak trees being removed, but to accommodate the developments, they are requesting those to be removed and include mitigation to address those concerns. And if you, whether that is planting onsite, planting offsite, or through mitigation into our tree fund, we are actually looking at strengthening our code, but we struggle with people now who have homes who want to remove trees, just because they want to remove the trees. They don't like the leaf litter and other non-structural, non-damage reasons that they would like to do that. And we fight that all day long, just in, right down to our street trees. People actually request our street trees to be removed because of leaf litter. So we are looking at potentially further strengthening this section of the code, but as long as they, because we want to preserve those type of canopy, but right now, this project meets our code, which is the only reason that we are recommending approval. Not because we particularly agree with this type of development going here, which is the reason that we did away with the NRO, but they were, has submitted before the conversation of removing the NRO occurred. So we have to honor that application. And because they have invested, they have to be reviewed under the NRO standards-
Correct.
-which is the reason we're making recommendation of approval, because it does meet the code. The parking, to your question, sir, Mr. Bob, is that they have 16 parking spaces. This, our code currently requires one and a half parking space per dwelling unit and then an additional 5% on top of that for guests. This may be something that we may visit during the LDR updates that we are currently undertaking. We've talked to folks in the community as to potential changes, but yes, they can apply to have trees removed. In the case of a single family, where the gentleman or the property owner, proprietor just wanted to remove the trees, because they wanted to remove the trees, we would, that would not provide adequate justification for us to allow them to remove these large canopy trees. But in the case of redevelopment, we have to look at that slightly differently. One of the things they didn't tell you is all that space that you see that's on the ground is permeable materials. That is a requirement to try to deal with drainage issues and having the safety, having that open space area. We do agree that it does need more landscaping, and we will look at that closer at the DRC. So hopefully this answered your question and perhaps more than you asked.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. Tree issue aside, I'm not comfortable with the project only because of the community meeting not coming to pass before they are coming before us, especially when it was spoken about the meeting previous.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Mr. Reek, you have the floor, sir?
I'd like to ask the architect a couple of questions, if I may, please. Thank you. How many square feet in each one of these units?
On the ground floor is 750 plus 200 cover space. Under AC, 750.
750 on the first floor or total?
Correct, the first floor.
And what's on the second floor?
850.
So we're looking at 1,500 square feet with four-
A little bit over 1,500.
1,550 under roof with four bedrooms?
Yes.
Can you hear me? 1,550 with four bedrooms?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My other question is, what would these units sell for?
I don't know that, sir.
Well, we're talking about, we're going to be selling these. These are not going to be rentals. Is that correct?
Correct. They're going to be sold.
Well, we could have a ballpark figure what we're looking at. I mean, what's the market going for now? I mean, it can change, but what would a unit like that go for now? Do we have any idea, developer?
James, do you know? I don't think that even my client knows that yet.
All right. Well, I have, the concerns have already been mentioned that I have.
Right.
We're putting the horse before the cart or vice versa, the cart before the horse. We were supposed to have a community meeting. That was explicitly brought out on the last time we went around here. We talked about the trees, okay? Now, I understand the trees supposedly have to go because this is a new project and maybe by law you might have this. I don't know. I look at this project and I say, is it going to benefit the neighborhood? Reason I'm asking you about the cost of the townhouse, is it going to be compatible and improve the property values of the neighborhood, or is that going to bring it down? Now, when we're looking at putting 10 houses and four bedrooms each, we're looking at, you know, a hell of a lot of people going into this neighborhood.
Sir.
And then we're going to, and we're going to take out the trees and, you know, I don't have a problem with developing that property. I don't have a problem with townhouses, but we could do it a heck of a lot nicer. You know, we talked about 27 feet.
20.
I wouldn't care if you went 34 feet, as long as it was a classy, elegant building that was going to improve the property values for the other people there. To me, this looks like bare bones. I don't mean to knock your style. I know you were given a mission, and you're a very qualified architect, and I think you did a good job at what you were asked to do. But in my opinion, it could be a heck of a lot better, and it could be more compatible with the existing trees that are there. If we want, say, seven houses or, you know, whatever, but I just do not understand how this is going to improve the value for the other people in the neighborhood and also their quality of life. I go on the other side of the tracks. I really recently seen a development, I'm thinking 126th Street, just east of 15th Avenue by Arch Creek, same type of neighborhood, but this man put up a beautiful four-unit building, which was absolutely elegant, and it improved the values of everybody over there. And, you know, you're a very sharp guy, and I'm sure that you can come up with a concept that would blend in with the neighborhood, be elegant. I wouldn't care, like you say, 34 feet, go 34 feet, and make sure that we have the shrubbery between the other residents and not to give the people the privacy. I have those concerns, and my biggest concern was, we did not meet with the neighborhood. And I, to me, is pinnacle. I mean, that's something that we should do. I do have a question for staff, if I may. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We come up with this on our project attributes, and we say 14 permanent jobs created and a half a million in wages. Is that going to be coming out of the people that live in the townhouse, or is that going to be for service of the townhouse? I didn't quite understand that. How did we come to that?
We didn't come to that. Their economic analysis-
Yeah.
-that they presented to us indicated that. Let me take a look, see if I have specific details.
Is that because of the people moving in are going to bring that economic analysis, or is that because-
Let me see what they're saying.
Or we're going to be servicing that project? It didn't just drive with me.
Sure. Let's see what it's saying. Building employment and operating. And I think the applicant would be the better to tell you, explain that to you, because it is, it is definitely in their economic impact analysis.
Okay, the developer.
Yes, that came from the developer.
Okay. Can I have Joe or somebody explain that to me, please, if you would, sir?
And for the record, that's 14 permanent jobs.
It's not a pay job for HRE, 14 permanent jobs created with the total of 25 million in wages.
It's a half, half a million dollars, 500,000.
I didn't quite understand.
So, yeah, I guess we're trying to look at where those numbers go to, yard maintenance, you know.
Is that maintenance to the project?
It actually includes 14 direct and indirect full-time jobs annually, and more than a half million in direct and indirect wages and benefits annually-
Okay.
-related to building employment and operating expenditures.
And that would be to service the townhouses?
It doesn't say that. That's why I said I have to defer to the applicant's-
Okay. I'm sorry. How does that work? Is that to service them or?
Let me-
Thank you.
...answer as best I can. There are two things in the economic analysis. One of them is that it results in something like $340,000 a year in property taxes for the city, and that's one of the impacts that we have in economic analysis. As to the rest of your question, Commissioner Eech, my understanding is that it does relate to people that are going to be keeping up the landscaping, people that are going to be doing the maintenance, people that may be onsite, whether there's, you know, there's some management, but I'm not in the habit of talking through my hat, Mr. Eech. And the direct answer to your question is, my client retained somebody to submit an economic analysis that was done. It was submitted by the city. We've answered the questions that staff had, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you something that I don't know. So let me say to you that having, we haven't heard, well, you know what, I'm going to defer. I have one comment I would like to make, but, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to ask at least their question.
And we'll give you that opportunity once we get-
I'll just do that, but I'm not going to give you an answer that I don't know is right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geller.
All right. The other thing I had, it says expansion of homeownership opportunities in a neighborhood dominated by older, single-family homes. That's true, but is it going to be an added value to the existing homes? That's my other question. And with that, I think I made my-
Let me try and answer that. We're just a long way-
Okay.
-from knowing what this final project is going to look like. These are not small. These are four-bedroom. They're spacious. They're not these little mini places, so we think they're going to be substantially valuable, but we're so far from any kind of final approval, and not just what the site plan might tell us, but what we might have to do with the building permits, till we have a better idea of the cost of construction, of what the final project is going to consist of. Any guess that we gave you about what it's going to sell for wouldn't really be based on reality, and we don't want to sit here and just pitch numbers out.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott, or, I'm sorry. He's out. Mr. Bestin?
Okay. I have a question regarding the distance between the two buildings where the cars will be driving in and out. Who would be able to answer that question for?
Yes, sir. We are required to provide a 24-drive aisle, and that is exactly what the project is providing.
Okay. An SUV is how long? Typical SUV, Chevy Tahoe, Suburban, Explorer? I'm sorry?
Between 14 and 18.
18, and you have 22.
Well, the requirement for every parking in, throughout the state of Florida, mostly is 24-feet aisle drive.
I understand. But your entrances to the-
And plus, I'm sorry. And plus, you have the actual parking space, you know, which adds the depth, you know, beyond what is the requirement, yeah.
No, I understand that. So when people come out of their front door, they have, and they want to walk to the street, they're going to walk in that parking alley, so to speak, correct?
It is a sidewalk.
And how wide is the sidewalk?
Five feet.
Is it on both sides?
Correct.
Okay.
And that leads to the gates on the front.
Question for Mr. Geller.
Yes, sir.
Were you present at the meeting a year ago?
Yes, sir.
When you denied it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we strongly recommended that you have meetings with the public. Why did you not do that when we strongly suggested that, rather than kicking the can down the road and saying, well, if you give me the okay, then we'll have a meeting, maybe two? We directed you to do that. Why did you not do that?
Well, there's two answers to that.
Okay.
There's a legal answer, and then there's a practical answer. The legal answer is, as your staff has advised you, we weren't required to do that because we weren't continuing with the same application. We went out and got a brand-new architect who designed a different project with different landscaping, with different mitigation, with different parking, with different articulation, and those were if we had continued with the same application, which we weren't. So we weren't required to. I understand people say, and yes, I was here, I heard what was said. As I said in my initial presentation, we thought, maybe wrongly from listening to the members of this commission, but we thought that it would be more productive to come before this commission, to hear your thoughts and comments, and then to hold the community meeting with the benefit of those, which we've committed. Now, I've talked with my client, and since the point has been made that previously it said two, I said we committed to hold at least one. We'll change that on the record. We'll commit that we will hold at least two community meetings before this project goes before the City Council. You make a recommendation, the City Council still has to decide it. And again- And again, this is only conceptual. This is just the conditional use. Site plan is an enormous hurdle. And DRC before you get to site plan. And then, we first have to have actual working plans that go before the building department and all the sub-specialties, and they have to, you know, vet all of these things. Now, if the only thing that kept you from letting us move that first baby step was that we made a mistake in saying, "We think it's more productive for us to meet with these citizens who've taken their time to come out of their house at night and sit here and voice their opinion before we go to the City Council meeting." If the only thing that's going to keep you from saying, "You can take that first baby step," is that we chose wrongly in making that. I said that we're going to have these before we get to the council. But then certainly, if you voted that you didn't want to approve this until after those are held, well, that's your privilege, and of course, we will comply, because that's this application. And if that's what you tell us, we'll comply with that. But I honestly don't see the difference of holding those meetings before your vote, your recommendation, and holding those meetings before we go to City Council, having heard from the people who came out tonight, but equally importantly, having heard from you before we go into them. But if you think otherwise, if you think, "No, by God, our feeling was you should hold them before you come in front of us," and you vote that, we will comply, we will respect that, and we'll do as you ask. But we would submit to you that we made a choice. Maybe we made the wrong choice. I don't mind owning mistake. We thought it would be more valuable after this meeting before City Council, and if you feel otherwise, then vote that, and we'll comply. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Geller.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Geller.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few questions concerning the applicant. Mr. Geller, is there anyone else here besides you and the architect representing Blue Development?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Samuel Jamie Akbas. He is an owner's rep. He is present. He is available. He took an oath to testify truthfully. I'll say that I did ask him if he knew at this time what the owner intended to charge for these pretty large spacious units. And I gave that answer on the record, which is too many unknowns at this time in terms of what the final plans would actually look like, and what the cost of construction would be, and any other adjustments. And as Ms. Love said, if the substantial 30 trees that we've offered is insufficient, and the fact that it will take maybe two and a half years to match the current canopy could be insufficient. Ms. Love pointed out that we could very well be asked to make a financial contribution to the tree fund for additional mitigation. And if that's where the city comes down, so be it. But obviously, that's one thing that would potentially impact substantially how much the units would be offered for sale, because nobody offers them for sale at a loss. But if there are other questions, because Mr. Akbas told me, not really something that he can answer now. He's an owner's rep. He's not like the owner. But if you have any other questions that you'd like to ask of him, he's here and he's available, and I'm happy to bring him up.
Can he please come forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Akbas. I'm the owner's rep for this project, and I'm here to respond to any question you guys might have.
Good evening. Thank you so very much. And so, my first question is, is this your first attempt to develop here in the city of North Miami?
Second.
The second?
Second.
And can you share a little bit about the first attempt?
Sola Miami Project.
Sola--
Miami.
Ah, okay. And so, in developing Sola Miami, you did do a community workshop, correct?
Correct.
So, I'm a little lost as to understand, and I know that Mr. Geller did a very good job explaining that there were going to be a few changes and so on and so forth. But why didn't you follow the same procedures that you went through with Sola Miami?
I believe Mr. Geller answered that question. That's why I don't want to repeat the same answer here.
No, I understand. But after going through the process the first time, you understand what should be the standard. And so, although they may have advised you not to, you know that the residents are not going to let up. You know that if they ask to meet with you, they're going to want to meet with you, and they're going to keep coming back and highlighting the fact that you failed to do that. And the reason I asked to speak to you is because I want to be fair. If you've never built here before and you've never dealt with our residents, then, okay, fine, you may not really understand how they function. But if you've done this before, this is not your first rodeo, per se--
Correct.
--right? You should really come forth with that knowledge, and you should display some kind of understanding of how the city of North Miami works.
I understand, but I'm not 100% sure. But I believe we did the community meeting before the City Council, not before this meeting.
Okay, so I--
That's why, you know--
I don't want to misread what is being said, but to me, it seems as if it was put aside because we're not the City Council?
No, 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 please stop.
And no, I'm just saying, this is what it seems, as if like you guys really wanted to do everything and get it ready for the City Council, and make sure that everything is prepared for that. And I understand that frame of thought, because they are the final decision-makers. However, if you do not meet them at the point that they're requesting right now, what do you think is going to happen when you go to City Council? If you have 10 people here now, you're going to have 45 people then, and it's going to be worse on you. So, I'm saying all of this to say to you that use the knowledge that you've gained with Sola Miami. Don't sweep it under the rug. It's the same city, the same people, the same mentality, the same frustration, and some of the very same challenges, right? Removing trees is not something that we, as a community, as a city, favor, because we have a lot of drainage issues and we have a lot of flooding, right? So, the minute you say you want to remove trees, everybody's alarm goes off, because we know that had we treated trees differently in the city, we may not have some of the issues that we have now, okay? The other question that I have--
Before the other question, so that's the reason that we heavily landscaped. The previous design didn't have this much of trees. So, now we have a lot more trees and a lot more shrubs and bushes in the property. And we also changed the amount of the permeable pavers in the property, so we have a lot more than before.
Okay.
So, we tried to, you know, mitigate the concern from the previous one. And we also drastically changed our design, as you guys see. It's a lot better, and, you know--
Than before. Listen, I understand, obviously--
Than before. We tried really hard, and it took a long time to come to this point, because, you know, we really put the time and effort to come up with this design. And I understand, and I really do feel that, you know, the intensity of the, you know, the pain of the removing trees. But like Mr. Geller said previously, that, you know, we are willing to put more trees even besides our property, wherever the city wants us to put to mitigate--
The other issue.
--equal to the other issues.
Okay. The other issue that I have-- Where do you live, sir?
Southwest Ranches, Florida.
Okay, Southwest Ranches. So, the other issue that I have is, if I am looking to purchase a home in the city of North Miami, and I'm going to purchase a four-bedroom, at minimum, I need two parking spaces, one for me, one for my husband. And I have an eight-year-old son. By the time he turns 17, we're going to need three. I kind of need you to think along those lines, okay? Especially for someone who lives in Southwest Ranches, right? So, I know sometimes, you know, as a business owner, as a businessman, you're thinking about your project, you're thinking about how you're going to make money, and I totally get it as a business owner myself. But you also have to put yourself in the shoes of the people that you're bringing the project to. You know, one and a half spaces for parking? One and a half parking spaces? And I know the staff is telling you that it's okay, but think outside the box, think as if you were coming to live here in this space. Would it be acceptable? And then, just say you just have, you know, your cousin or your aunt over. Where are they going to park? It doesn't-- It doesn't make sense. And when it doesn't make sense, people feel as if you don't consider them, and that you're just coming to make money. And you seem like a very nice guy, and I've seen your other project over there. And so, I want you to understand my heart here. Put yourself in the shoes of the other people. One and a half parking, no matter who in the city of North Miami tells you that that's acceptable, it's not acceptable. It's not. Their job is to give you the minimum requirement of what the law-- of what they've put together. But think about it as a person who's living here. Doesn't make sense, okay? So, unfortunately, I cannot support the project, and not because I don't want to, and not because I don't feel that we need homeownership. I've been like literally screaming from the top of my lungs forever that I'm sick and tired of apartments coming into North Miami. We need homeownership, right? So, I love what you want to bring, but the issue is the parking, the lack of communication, the fact that you have knowledge of the city, but you're just listening to staffers who are not the one who are sitting before you telling you no. And clearly, they may-- if you ask them, they're not happy with the staffers either. Clearly, right? There's a big-- Like, you know, get with the program a little bit. They're not happy with the staffers, they're not happy with the decision, they were never happy with the NROs, that's why we took them away, you know? And it's not your fault, but if you're going to be successful in this environment, you have to read the room. And even when staff tells you something is okay, you got to ask yourself, based on your knowledge, based on your experience here, is it really okay? May not be. Thank you so very much.
If, Mr. Seifert, if I could just interject another point on what you've just said. You know, we're in moral limbo here. Far be it from me to try to judge somebody morally, whether they're right or wrong. But when it comes to something like looking at this property, and the reason why we took it out of the NRO is because of it being a residential area, and the tree covering and the trees that are on that property, I would have thought, and maybe it's just me, that the developer would have said, "You know, this is not a very good spot for me to choose to put a development like this on this piece of land." So, that played into a big part with our first rejection of this, as to the fact of, why would somebody want to jeopardize that piece of land and those trees and the greenery that's there, and actually bring something that doesn't even fit in that neighborhood to our city and to that, and to put it on that piece of property? So, you know, that's something that-- easy for me to judge, but, you know, I would have hoped, as a developer, you would have thought along that line. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Seifert, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I voted against this project a year ago, and my mind has not changed, and I'll tell you why, and try to be brief about it. As I look at this project, I remember the old design, and it was 10 housing units. And I look at what you tell me is a brand-new project, it's still 10 housing units. I understand the legal distinction. I don't see this as a different project. 10 units and 10 units, that's what I looked at at the street level. Now, I tell you, I'm not a car driver in these years. I ride a bicycle, and I go to work every day. And, you know, when you ride a bicycle, you get an entirely different perspective on neighborhoods. When you cruise down our residential streets at 35 to 45 miles an hour, you don't see the houses, you don't see the landscaping, and you don't count the cars. As a bicyclist, I can take you on a ride and show you homes, if you want to get up early in the morning, that have three, four, five, six, and seven cars parked in front of single-family homes. And so, now you present this picture where the code says one and a half parking spaces. Well, I've got news for you. That code was written in the days of Ozzy and Harriet. For those of you that happen to remember your television history. And in those days, you had one car and maybe a motorcycle. And that's what you had.
A Vespa scooter.
Yes. And one person only went to work. Oddly, they never explained how the children got to school. That was left out. They never discussed childhood labor issues where they had to go to work. And I look at today's family environments, and I've got news for you. We're not living in Ozzy and Harriet times. The 1950s died a very long time ago. We now see where you've got to have both parents working if they expect to pay the mortgage, and pay the light bill, and pay the phone bill, and pay the gas bill if they happen to have a washer and dryer. I've got news for you. There's not a coin laundry that you can walk to in that neighborhood. So, you're going to have to drive. I don't know who did the traffic study, and I don't know how old it is, but I take serious issue with this. I'm surprised staff blew by this and thought it was wonderful. I quote here that the transportation manager indicates a net increase of only five morning and seven evening peak-hour trips. Oh, people, get real. If you're not both working, you can't afford to buy a townhouse and live in this town and have children. I'm sorry, the economics just don't work anymore. Those days are long over with. And so, when I sit back and I look at this, yes, it's a prettier picture than we had a year ago, but 10 housing units is still 10 housing units. That hasn't changed. I think the far better use for this property would be for the city to buy it and leave it as a neighborhood park. it as a neighborhood park.
Yes.
Relative to the single-family structure? Yes, that's an antiquated concept, and you know, antiquated concepts have a great deal of value in our neighborhoods. And there are some places that just should not be messed with, and in my humble opinion, this site is one of them that should not be messed with. North Miami doesn't have that many trees left that are two hundred years old, 'cause we bulldozed them all. And we have paved over so many available spots in this city that we're gonna wind up like Houston on the next big wet hurricane and have no place for the water to go. We need these kinds of neighborhood spaces to absorb the rainwater that is gonna come. And this plan does, I'm sorry, don't tell me the engineering, it just isn't gonna work. And I appreciate the logic, and I appreciate the academe, academia studies. I just don't buy it, uh, not for this site. It is the wrong project for this site. You wanna buy the house, bulldoze it and put up a new modern house, a single-family house? Okay, fine. But don't do a wholesale destruction of what has the greatest value in North Miami. I'm sorry, I, I don't buy that. And then it says this application is consistent with applicable development standards in the LDRs. Well, maybe in theory, but the theorists have never walked the streets, 'cause they're all busy in their offices. This is a single-family neighborhood. Ten townhomes are not going to increase property values, not when you consider all the cars that are gonna come along with it. No house, no housing unit can make do on one and a half parking spaces, just ask the people in Kendall. You'll find out there, you can't, you can't get across the street. There are too many cars. Why, we're, we are an automobile society. Now, do I welcome electric cars? Yes, I do. And do I think we should have more mopeds and more scooters? Yes, I think we should, and absolutely more bicycles. Reason we don't have bicycles, the city isn't smart enough to put bicycle parking slots in front of our commercial properties. I could tell you lots of commercial properties I've been to but can't go into because there's no place to park a bicycle. Now, the use is compatible with adjacent development. Ten townhomes are not compatible dropped in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. They don't look anything like the single-family homes in that neighborhood. And again, I travel the streets very slowly, you know? It's something about aging, you, you finally wake up and realize you gotta smell the roses before they're all cut down. And I tell you, being a bicyclist for the last several years has radically changed me in my perspectives on urban living. Now, for those of you who don't know me, it's fine, I, you know, you're just neighbors I haven't met. But I've been on this planning commission for, I think, pretty close to forty years. Spent twenty years as the chairperson, thoroughly enjoyed it. And I, I tell you, I, I deeply respect the individual perspectives of our commissioners. We are as diverse a group of people as you're going to find in a representative board for this city. And I have not heard one redeeming opinion in support of the project, which makes me feel good. I, I was prepared to be the only one to say no, but I, I kind of think that we're all gonna wind up in that position. And, uh, there's no substitute for three-hundred-year-old trees, there just isn't. I, I think open spaces, we need a few more of those in the city. And Joe, you're, you're one hell of a good lawyer, and I deeply respect your work in your career. And you're an amazing guy in so many ways. And I look out at the audience, these are homeowners, they're vested in where they live, and I see no compatibility between this project and their neighborhoods. Now, if this were a borderline project that was butt up against our industrial area or butt up against one of these new high-rise apartment buildings that are springing up like weeds over the city, okay, I, you could twist my arm and give it some leeway, and you might call it compatible with adjacent areas. There's nothing adjacent to this that it's compatible with, and it doesn't look anything like the single-family homes that are there. I, I see no redeeming qualities with this. I'm a little surprised at the position that staff has taken. I, I understand that they feel obligated to follow the law, and as long as this project touched the legal basis points, they, they feel compelled to support it even though they admit they don't like it. I don't like it at all. I think it doesn't belong at that location. Uh, I, I won't tell you where I think it belongs, that is somebody else's concern. I, I just don't see it, and, you know, I look at the rest of these points that they've made, and I honestly think they're really stretching it to draw their conclusions. And above all, you've got a four-apartment unit, and you've got one and a half parking spaces, fifteen hundred square feet. I can show you homes that are thirteen hundred and fifty square feet and have seven cars in front of them. I don't know where the people sleep, I don't know how many bathrooms they've got in that house, but I can tell you, you're not gonna make this work with one and a half parking spaces. Our parking regulations, I have felt for, for, for a decade or longer, are unrealistic in light of urban development. Now, I understand government is always behind the real world by ten or twenty years, but we really gotta get caught up. Uh, and you're not gonna make one and a half parking spaces pan out. And yes, you've got sixteen spaces, I think that's really cute. You're not gonna tell me a family when their children get to be sixteen and they need a car, and you're gonna have the average of two children and two parents, or maybe a grandparent, too. Well, you know, granny or granddad, they gotta get around also, you know? And, uh, I, I just don't see this, Joe, I'm sorry, I, I, you're a hell of a great guy. I'm, I'm opposed completely. I'm disappointed in staff, but I understand the position they're in, and that's all I can tell you, Charlie.
Uh, Mr. Geller, obviously, you've been reading the tea leaves while we've been talking.
Yes, sir. May, may I make a brief comment?
Yeah, because I need to ask.
Yes, sir. I know you have other business.
No, and also, we wanna, I've gotta get some clarification from staff.
I may be able to stop.
Go ahead and, and have your say.
A lot of things have been said, a lot of things have been said by citizens, a lot of things have been said by members of this commission. I think of all of them, perhaps the most compelling came from Commissioner Blamir, who said, "Read the room." I can read, including this room. I will confess that it was clearly, at this position, an error to say, "Well, these community meetings would go better after planning commission." That's not because we don't respect what planning commission has to say. Frankly, it's the opposite. We wanted the input of the planning commission, but notwithstanding, that was an error in judgment. At this time, Mr. Chair, having heard loud and clear what both the citizens and the commissioners have said, we wish to defer this application until such time as we can hold at least two community meetings, hear what the citizens have to say, see if that results in any changes about what we're proposing, and there've been a lot of suggestions. So, we would ask simply that you allow us to defer this, and we will not come back until such time as we've held at least two community meetings.
Counselor, can you give us the ramifications of us voting for, against it, or, or following the petitioner's wishes to defer?
You could either vote against it and require the meetings as you did the last time with the other project, or if they withdraw their application, it is their application, you could also allow them to come back after the meetings.
We, we ask to defer. That's clearly the sentiment we're hearing tonight. Allow us to have the meetings the way you have said we should? We'll do that, and I commit, we will not be back until we've held at least two community meetings. We will not seek to be rescheduled in front of you. We would ask you to allow us to.
Counselor, is that, this defer, deferment, is it a matter of us approving it on a vote, on a vote?
Well, you would have a motion and a vote on whether to defer. You could also have a motion or a vote on denial with the condition that they have these meetings before coming back.
The last time we put the proviso in there that we wanted to save the trees, I don't know how you wanna do that.
We would ask that you allow us to explore other opportunities before you put that in, because you ultimately will, you're not giving anything away by letting us defer. At the end, when you've heard from us and you've heard, we've heard from the community, you can do whatever you think is appropriate. For now, we would just ask that you allow us to have the.
Let me, let me ask staff, should we, should we vote no in moving this forward? Does this mean, no, that it does not go to the city council, or that our recommendation would go as a seven-oh against recommendation?
Six-oh.
Debbie, can you, can you explain that further to us, please?
Yes, sir. If you defer, um, which, it is your decision whether to defer or to vote, as your counsel has advised you. Typically, when you vote no, that doesn't necessarily mean it can't move forward to city council. However, he has noted that he's committed to doing those two public workshops. I would like for them to also look carefully at this landscaping and the tree issue. Again, as I said, they didn't meet the strict application of the code. And it puts staff in a position of having to make a recommendation because it did meet all the company. Not that we liked it, not that we want the trees removed. So, my recommendation would be to defer. Then there is a very clear direction for staff, it's not going to go anywhere, and it will cost to come back to you. That would be my recommendation, but I would like to, to defer to Mr. Paul and Swen.
Counselor?
Well, it, it's up to the board. I think the board has the option of doing either. Now, you have staff recommending.
Right.
That you give them clear direction that the project shouldn't go forward, that it has to come back to you after these two meetings, so.
All right.
You can decide to follow.
So, I'm going to entertain a, a motion to defer this item.
Second.
I have a.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Each has moved that we defer. I have a second, I believe, from Ms. Blamir. And I'll make a roll call vote on this.
All right. Chairman Ernst?
I vote for deferment, yes.
Okay. We're voting for deferment.
It would be a yes.
Yes. Okay. Commissioner Blamir?
Yes.
Commissioner Each?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifert?
No.
Commissioner Pierre?
Yes.
Commissioner Bob?
Yes.
And Commissioner Besen?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was seven.
Yes, it is. The motion to defer this item passes with a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members and citizens who came out tonight. We look forward to seeing you and interacting with you. Thank you very much.
The side is very closed. I ask for a ten-minute recess for everyone before we move on to the next item, if we could, please, thank you.
We are in recess for ten minutes.
I don't mind the minority vote.
No, no, no.
I just think this thing is never gonna die, and it's got to, but, you know.
I have a good family life, which is starting his early career development. They know exactly, he right now is, is doing design for the Google data. Building dollar projects.
Not to interrupt, I apologize, but we're gonna bring Mr. McTirman back in.
Yeah, no, that's fine. No, we're gonna do that now.
We're gonna move.
The manager.
Go ahead.
They know exactly to the penny what each unit costs and what it's going to cost. I think why they don't start, it's always shit.
A bowl, always a bowl, like.
A bear bones.
I looked at the skin out of that.
I don't like the project here.
Forty-story, not forty-story, forty-foot building, I think.
Kenny?
Well, my election to go to council, both.
That's a Sam bag.
I do, sir.
That's a Sam bag.
Sir, how do you do?
How are you?
And I don't know what's happening.
They said they had the money, they were bringing.
Most, they were supposed to break around last fall.
I don't see where it is.
It looks like, well, it would be a great story if it was.
The door, the wall, or something like that is better than you.
Well, yes, yes, it'd recover much more easily than I.
I just put a thing on pile, wasn't pro.
When I first saw you, I thought maybe it's still in.
No, no.
Listen, you gotta come on a dramatic story.
I saw, I saw someone down the street.
Listen, he was flying in front of me, I got tossed out of the water.
But I liked that.
Oh, I have an excellent house.
Okay, yeah.
They, they described that it gave me this idea seriously, my insight, and they didn't tell me blue to get it.
And I took it nine to four, okay, that Saturday, everything was pounding around.
And I made it a picture of the night, and I started dinner, and by five-thirty, I actually had blood all over the place, lung.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't pretty.
From origin.
Since then, I stopped the lights for four days.
Since then, I stopped the lights for four days. Well, this was the morning. Somebody at the hospital may be putting some gas to the engine in the morning. And always had it up for a day.
Right, yeah.
How's your, your boss?
He's, I think he's a great guy.
They're along with him. They're along with the techs. They're making some changes.
Let's hope so. Well, I can keep my job. That's all.
No, I can always give them.
That's going to be important.
I heard that they're opening a new office in Miami Gardens.
Tax law here, the tax law. Two locations. One, they kind of want downtown, and they really wanted a bigger site, but they're really looking for a larger site. Right? Which is nothing. First money that they can afford, and then also the whole. We're looking for an office.
Oh.
Service like. Do in the air. Back to. Six county line. I've gotten all the love this. So far, so far, he's got a lot of people for a lot of money. Back in the.
Yeah, I see that they're looking for class. Parents, my. I didn't know they have a.
And he's got, he gets a percentage to get. He was actually going to try and get some blood. Cities. And he backed off of that. He knows more money now. It's not allowed to have gold money. Well, that more pressure, and he's not allowed to have all the money. He wants to get in and out, get your tax money back, get in and out. Charlie.
We ready?
This is our two-minute warning, two minutes to, when we resume.
You okay, buddy?
Is this redwood or is this?
Nah, I'm, I'm, we're going to be tied up another hour, so just want to be long with tonight. Okay, partner. I'll speak to you later.
Oh, it's right there.
You all right? Hungry? You hungry? Are you hungry? No, I sure am. Oh, yeah.
Well, the, the project. Sole Miami, right next to the high school. I think it's 130 something or something. The Sole Miami project?
No.
Since yeah. I'm trying to think of the project.
All right, folks, if everybody wants to take their seat, we're about to begin. Mr. McDermott, if you can hear me out in the hallway, we are about to begin. We're waiting for Mr. McDermott. Where's Mike? Just called him.
I gotta tell you something. Did you ever get, ever call Honor Flight?
No, I never did because I got tied up with some other stuff.
I had to pull, I had to pull a lot of stuff down from the attic.
The tanker?
Yeah.
I have orders. I never had to put on my DD214, but I got it after I got my initial DD214.
Right, right, right.
Well, I got the Purple Hearts in the Navy. I'm an Army guy.
I have to, because it's going to be on.
And then I received the course. Of course, the gallantry with the Silver Stars from the Vietnamese government. And I never had that entered on my DD214. I got it through the orders. I looked at them in 1968.
Yeah, mine are 1970. DD214. We're still waiting for one more, two more people here. There is. Mike.
Lady Adams sentenced the shooter to jail.
Eight sixty.
Eight fifty. Eight five zero northeast one thirty-four. Right here from the, you can see the high school.
Okay, we're waiting for Mr. Seifried, and we'll, we'll begin. Once again, this is a quasi judicial. This is a quasi judicial proceedings. Now, I'll call back into session the planning commission meeting for Thursday, September 18th, 2025, time 9:20. Madam Secretary, we will need to swear, everybody, and Mr. Attorney, do you need to read the items over again?
Is there, I mean, if people were present at the beginning of the meeting, you, normally, you wouldn't reread it?
You don't need to, well, in the past, we haven't had to, as long as they, they took the oath. The only person who would need to take the oath, again, is the gentleman who's willing to do the translation.
Well, the gentleman, sir, do you still need to translate? Well, okay, so you can take the oath if you come up to the podium when it's time.
Oh, sorry, I do have to swear one more person.
I see Mr., I see Councilman.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
But are there any people here who want to testify who weren't here earlier? When the oath was given? Okay.
So you, well, we will have to swear them both in then. You want to wait until they come up to the podium to do that?
I think they said they were here and sworn in earlier, correct?
Yeah, they were, okay.
Okay, and maybe your witness, your witness who doesn't speak English can be sworn in, right?
So the only person who actually needs to be sworn in.
Right. Mr. Burns, would you like to be sworn in, sir?
Yes.
Before we.
So if you just stand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Very good. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Did you wish to swear the translator in at the time of public hearing, or no?
No, I think he, he was here when we.
No, it's for something else that the.
Normally, I mean, it's up to the board how you want to handle it.
Because he's going to translate. It's another oath.
All right. Oh, well, he's got to translate what you say, so yes, that's right. Sir, could you come to the podium, please?
Thanks.
So do you solemnly swear and affirm that the translation you will provide in this proceeding will be accurate to the best of your knowledge, skills, and abilities?
I do.
Thank you. So can you translate, and, you know, obviously, while it's going on, to the person who's here with you? Thank you.
Very good. All right. So also on this item, I need to have any disclosures from the members of the commission? I'll start with Mr. Bob down front. Have you had any communications or shared any, anything regarding this item? Mr. Pierre?
No.
Ken, have you, on this next item, we are about to.
Oh, yeah, thank, thank you. I was at a meeting to hear the proposal, like, I think it was Tuesday night. I went over to the, I forget the name of the condo on 135th Street to listen to the proposal. I didn't speak to anybody, or just sat there and listened to what they want to build.
All right. Counselor, does that meet all the requirements? We're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. McDermott?
No.
None? Myself, none. Ms. Blommer?
No.
Mr. Seifried?
No, no way to put on this one.
And I, I, did I ask you, Mr. Bob? Okay, so we're clear on all that, then? Okay, so the next item up is PC 17-113. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, approving an application for conditional use permit and substantially the attached form for proposed development consisting of a 10-story, 18-unit residential building on two parcels of real property located at 1998 Northeast 135th Street, identified with Miami County, follow wheel numbers 06-2229-008-0060 And totally, totaling approximately 0.34 acres in accordance with Article 3, Division 4, Sections 3-402 through 3-407, Articles 4, Division 2, Sections 4-202, Sections 4-203, parentheses A, close parentheses, Section 4-205, and Sections 4-310 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinance as Chapter 29, entitled Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Once again, on the record, Debbie Love, Development Services Director. I do have to apologize because my PowerPoint apparently is not working. It is all blank pages. So if you don't mind, I'll walk you gently.
Yeah.
Through the planning commission report.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your patience.
And if you could refer to pages, I think, hopefully, some of them are, are marked, the pages are.
In the staff report, the pages are numbered and of itself.
Okay.
So let me get over here so I can share my screen.
Okay.
If I may be allowed to interject at this point, I'm looking on page two of seven, and the site location according to that color photo, the aerial photo, is 127th Street and Arch Creek Road. Does not seem to match the address of 135th and 19th, 20th Avenue.
Yes. I've had help, and you can see the actual aerial photo that I collected, and it's on your screen. You'll see that this is the location of the property. And once again, it is a request for a conditional use permit. The applicant and their team is here, also with the presentation after I finished. So the property is, again, it is located at 1998 Northeast 135th Street. This also has two parcels of land. You can see the black line here that is the separation between the two parcels of land. It is currently zone R6 on the zoning map, identity residential. And they can do 20, 25 dwelling units per acre and go to a maximum of 110 feet. And based on the lot size, the zoning allows for nine dwelling units by right. The applicant is proposing a, actually, it's an 11-story, 18-unit luxury condominium building. They are requesting nine floating units to add to their existing as-of-right nine for a total of 18 dwelling units. The parcel size is 0.34 acres, about 15,000 square feet. Down here, you can see the zoning. This, the zoning is adjacent to C2BW, we C2BE, my apologies. And it is looking at the project attributes. Our 300-plus short-term direct and indirect construction jobs during the approximate two-year construction period with about $20 million in short-term construction wages. About $60 million a year, and they're anticipating to generate retail goods and primarily in retail and eating and drinking establishments. A little less than $1 million annually in added loan taxes and a one-time of $400,000 impact and permit fee payments. The units will be five-bedroom, 3,264 square feet. And they are proposed as luxury condominium units. They have 38 parking spaces within an integrated parking garage. And of course, they're going to be rebuilding 100% native vegetation and, and public art as well. Based upon our analysis, we do recommend approval of this particular project. The, that would be the end of mine unless there are specific questions over and above what I have presented here. The next steps after this is again, as I discussed in the first item. We anticipate this item going to city council at their 1014 council meeting. Again, those dates are tentative. They will then come back, assuming that city council approves the conditional use permit, they'll be required to come back and apply for a DRC site plan review. Once again, that's the more detailed, in-depth analyses. And once that is approved by DRC, and they have to answer all the suggestions, requirements for all the disciplines before, I guess, final DRC approval, it will then go to city council for final site plan approval. After that, assuming that it's approved, they will go directly over to building permit and once again, have a very robust review for building permit. Because they have to take this to the county at that point before they submit for building permit. So Miami-Dade County will look at traffic, they'll look at stormwater, they'll look at wastewater, they'll, they'll confirm and have other issues that they may raise that has to be addressed by the applicant before we can actually do building permit review. So they would have to incorporate any changes the county requires and then go to submit new plans. And then that's the set of plans that will go to building permit review. So this is quite a long process that folks go through. So with that, it's the end of my presentation. And if you have any questions, and they have the answer, and again, the applicant is here, I know they have a presentation, and they're excited to present their project to you.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Can we have your name and address, please, for the record?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rachel Streitfeldt. My law office is at 7275 Northwest First Court, Suite 104 in the city of Miami. I am honored to be land use counsel to the Shelton Miami Incorporated. They are the developers and the applicant for this beautiful project, the Shelton. I'm joined this evening by our architect, Koby Karp, who's the principal of Koby Karp Architecture, and his senior designer, Matthew Picard. We also have our landscape architect tonight from Witkin Haltz. That's Chris Eves. Let me just wave, Chris. Our owners representative, Farad Akchai, is here as well. Um, and I think that is it for our, for our team. We are very happy to be coming before you this evening with a recommendation of approval from your staff. And we listened intently and we're grateful for the education provided to us by your first item. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation, so if staff wouldn't mind. Do I need to hit something at 5? There we go. Did it. So, this is the Shelton Miami. As Ms. Love stated, we're at 1998 Northeast 135th Street. And we are coming to you for a recommendation of approval for a conditional use permit. We are, as Ms. Love stated, we are in your highest-density multifamily residential district here in the R6 zoning district. The underlying land use is the high-density multifamily. We are next to a marina and dry boat storage. And to the east of us is the Keystone Towers condominium. We had what I believe to have been an extraordinarily informative, productive, friendly, uh, conversation at the Dorset House on Monday night. It was very well-attended. There were about 30 neighbors who attended that community meeting. We were there for about two hours. And again, I feel it was very productive. We have incorporated comments from the neighbors into our presentation. And I look forward to this opportunity to reassure our community on 135th Street, not only that we will be responsible as we build this project, but we will be stewards of the peaceful, quiet residential neighborhood that is 135th Street, including supporting the environmental and resilience goals of the neighborhood, such as preserving access to the Arch Creek Preserve, as well as improving the park that is the median on 135th Street. So, our conditional use permit request is for nine floating units to bring our density to a total of 18 units on a .34-acre lot. We are not asking for an increase in height. Your code prohibits a height increase request under the conditional use permit. So, our maximum height is 110 feet, which is consistent with the neighborhood and with the zoning. We were very deliberate about our front setback. So, the setback that's required in the R6 is actually 25 feet, and that's what our setback is. But your code actually has an interesting provision for commercial corridors where the front setback can be no more than 15 feet. And 135th Street, interestingly, even though it's mostly residential, is designated in your code as a commercial corridor. So, instead of doing that maximum 15-foot setback, we wanted to be respectful of the character of the street and bring our building farther away, which is why we have that 25-foot setback. And there's other reasons to having that setback at 25 as opposed to 15, and we'll walk through that a little bit later in the presentation. I also heard the conversation that you had about parking. Recognizing that the city's language may be a little bit outdated, we are providing more than the required parking to the tune of about 10 additional spaces. So, we are doing 38 parking spaces in a fully-integrated innovative parking system. We are using triple stackers, and we are going to be using a local company that I think you all are familiar with, which is Klaus Parking, to build our parking garage. And it will be serviced by a 24/7 valet operation that will be professional, courteous, and it will be organized and updated in real time so that available parking spaces are maximized by not just the residents of the building, but also by their guests. I've heard a concern from the neighbors during our community meetings. And I should say that in addition to presenting at the Dorset House on Monday night, about a month ago, we had the opportunity to speak at the Keystone Point Homeowners Association. We attended with several boards. We answered questions. We were given about 10 minutes to present to Keystone Point. And we had support from, from the neighbors at the Keystone Point Homeowners Association. So, the concern that we heard was that we're building a big building on a small lot. Well, your code tells us how much of that lot we can actually cover. And the maximum in this zoning district is 80%. We are at 62.71% lot coverage, coming in 17.5% less than what the maximum would be in this zoning district. So, we have less lot coverage. We also have 34% open space. All of the driveway and drop-off areas will be pervious pavers. They will be elegant, large pervious pavers. And we're particularly paying attention to drainage with this project because in addition to having our 25% green space and meeting your landscape requirements and the 100% native plants that are in the code, we are also going to be lining the perimeter of these properties. Our, we have 10-foot side setbacks. We are going to be filling those setbacks with pervious, pervious pavers, but also with rain gardens and bio swales. And the rain gardens and bio swales add a second layer of green infrastructure, which will amplify the impacts of the gray infrastructure that we have engineered by our civil team to manage all of the stormwater, to have more than sufficient drainage capacity on this site. We're also going to be an FGBC, Florida Green Building Coalition, certified sustainable building. We are increasing the width of the existing sidewalk. We're going from a five-foot-wide sidewalk today to a new 10-foot sidewalk. We know that this is an area that people like to walk to, right? We have this beautiful preserve at the end of the block, and we want to encourage that pedestrian activity. We also want to ensure that pedestrians, as well as bikers, Commissioner Seifert, have a safe trip past our property, right? So, when we first came for our pre-application meeting and we met with your staff and Ms. Love, some people asked if there was any possibility of adding two on-street parking spaces in front of our building. And we asked not to do that, right? We didn't want to have parking in front of our building. And so, we are keeping, and again, this is within the city's right-of-way. It's not our property. And so, ultimately, what the city wants us to do, we're going to do. But we are keeping the swales in front of our property, and that's going to further protect pedestrians and bikers. It's going to enhance the character, that residential character of the street when we protect those swales. And I'm really actually proud to be representing a client who voluntarily, proactively, in advance of our community meetings and these hearings, made a charitable contribution to contribute to that park. We are helping pay for trash receptacles to keep the area clean and free of dog waste, as well as some park benches. So, we see the vision for this corridor, and we're actually thrilled to be a part of the future of this street. I mentioned the required setbacks. We're going from 20, from 15 to 25. And we do believe that that is going to enhance the relationship between the street and the building, especially for pedestrians as you're walking past the building. We meet all of the sustainability requirements that are set forth in the city's code, as well as the underlying zoning requirements. And we wanted to make sure that with our project, there was no idling on the street in front of this building. We are relatively close to Biscayne Boulevard here at this property. And we do not want UPS trucks, Amazon trucks, ride-share drivers, anyone who might be stopping by the property for a couple of minutes at a time. We don't want them idling on 135th Street. And so, what we did is, we used that front setback, and we're using pervious pavers to create a drop-off zone so that those short, like I said, UPS or Amazon drivers will be able to easily ingress onto our property. They will be able to drop off their food or pick up their passenger and then safely make their way. And there's room for a T-turn on our property. They won't be backing out onto 135th Street. The traffic circulation was very, very thoughtful when we were putting together this site plan. I also just want to highlight again, we did speak to the Keystone Point Homeowners Association, and we were welcomed, and we received positive feedback from them. We have a shadow study. We were able to walk them through our shadow study, and that eased, I think, some of the fears that some Keystone Point HOA neighbors may have had. And we also, again, had that very productive conversation with the neighbors at the Arch Creek East Neighborhood Association and the residents of the Dorset House and of the Keystone Towers, as well as other neighbors who came to ask us questions. And there were a lot of questions. We also are contributing to the character of this street by removing nuisances. What are the nuisances that we're talking about? And this is why it's so great to have communication with the neighborhood. This is not something that I would have known because I live in North Bay Village. This property, as it currently exists, has had a kayak operation that has, there have been not, you know, code violations, and the city has come to enforce its code. Commercial uses kayak, unlicensed kayak-launch businesses are not allowed here. And apparently, some of the neighbors have been exasperated over the years by this constant traffic of illegal kayak, stand-up paddle, and potentially jet ski businesses that are being launched from this property. So, we're looking forward to making it over, to introducing resilient, high-quality luxury housing here at 1998 Northeast 135th Street. I already mentioned the park improvement contribution that we have already made, and we frankly are committed to further supporting the, the park improvements as well as that access to the Arch Creek Preserve. Improvements on the sidewalk. We will be planting 20 trees on this property. All of them will be Florida native species. And we really do believe that this project is going to increase the property values for everyone who lives on 135th Street. These are five-bedroom luxury condominium units. We are hoping that they will sell for about $3 million apiece. And you heard from Ms. Love that the economic impact is about a little less than $1 million a year in ad valorem taxes. So, our last slide really just reiterates what is already in the staff report that is before you. You know, I'm, I'm actually really grateful for the language that Ms. Love included in that staff report because it's not just a perfunctory acknowledgement that we meet all nine or 10 of the requirements for a conditional use permit, but she articulates really why and how we have done that. And I think over the course of this presentation, you'll learn a little bit more about why this conditional use permit is absolutely inconsistent with the spirit and intent, not just of the underlying zoning district, but of the conditional use permit in general. And so, that, with that, I will turn it over to our architect, who's going to walk you through the beautiful building itself. Koby?
Hi, good evening. My name is Koby Karp. Thank you very much for having me here. Since Rachel made this very detailed presentation, I, I don't have very much to say. There are a couple of things that she did mention, which is important to just be cognizant of. This is our proposed building. I have made a simple material board here because the materials that we're seeking to do are nice. We have stone, fluted stone on the facade. We have copper trim all the way around. And then we have the teak wood underneath. Specifically, our property, as mentioned, you can see it right here. We have our 10-foot setback, which is lushly landscaped. But also, between us and the Keystone Towers, there's a physical separation. They have a parking lot next to our property. It's about 60, double-loaded, plus another lane, so it's probably about 80 feet. So, we're, the buildings are going to be apart from each other. The marina is immediately to the west. The construction that we are using is agar cast piles. Agar cast piles is how we build homes. They're big screws that screw down into the soil. So, there's no pounding. There's no pounding of piles. There's no pounding of sheet, uh, piles or any of that. It's agar cast piles. They go down, and then we pour the concrete in there. We also happen to be in a pretty good location, right across from 30th Court. So, when you come out, it goes directly to the north, right? Over there, so you can drive into our property and scoop around on 30th and go back to the west. During construction, the construction and all the work will be done on-site. And then our trucks will also be able to sweep around and come back out right here on this street, right here on 30th. Which is nice because then you can just scoop back and go back and leave this 135 street more open. Here, if you allow me, this is a close-up of the detail of working with. Your staff has been a real pleasure. They have been very specific that they want high-end finishes and materials. So, we selected, um, a stone and materials everywhere. If you want to look at some buildings that are similar to this, if you are familiar with Surfside Arte, that has the stone on it, or Seaway, that was just finished with the historic preservation, has the stone on it. So, the materials are quite nice. When you see also the way we build our buildings, because we know how we build a lot of buildings right next to each other, whether historic buildings and so forth, we are cognizant of our neighbors. So, with that, when we met with staff, they were very deliberate that the building looks 360 degrees with the imagery and the fluting all the way around with the materials. Did I miss anything, Matt? So, with that, I'll be quiet because I know the time is late. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Counselor, is there anything else you want to add?
No, nothing else.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Karp.
Mr. Chair, I would be grateful for some time for rebuttal after public comment. And then, of course, I'm happy to take questions from the panel.
Certainly. Thank you. Okay, at this point, commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and open up the, to the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address this item, please step forward.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My English is no good. My name is Walter Pipkin. I own the Keystone Point 2035 Apartment 503. I need a translator for my, my inky toothache.
Said he'd like a translator for some of his concerns.
Okay. His address again was what?
2000 Northeast 135th Street, Unit 503.
Thank you.
Says that the, the, the area is prone to substantial flooding, and he has concerns with the level of the flood plain and any work that's being done. And, and he hasn't seen a geotechnical study on the project that he could feel comfortable with, basically, the condition of the soil. And his, his main concern is that the movement with the construction of the soil and the structure is going to damage possibly Keystone Towers with the con- structure is going to damage possibly Keystone Towers with the movement of the construction. Considering how close we are to the water.
You have to try, and the tides are very high.
And the tides are very high. He has a serious concern with the parking situation, considering these units are going to be five bedrooms and only two parking spaces are going to be offered per unit, based on that density. Like the councilman or the Commissioner said, with visiting relatives, grandparents, and multifamilies living in such a big unit. Right now, on that street, in his community, there is a serious parking issue. And he wants to thank you for his time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this item, please step forward? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Tom Doherty. I am the president of Keystone Towers Condominium. Address is 2000 Northeast 135th Street, Apartment 904. I've been on the board of Keystone Towers for about 15 years, seen a lot of changes on the street. On the plus side, I'm very excited about this. I think it's a great development concept that they have. I am very concerned, however, about the quality of life for the residents of our building. It is, you know, if you look at the map, it's really one lane of traffic in, one lane of traffic out. So I think during the, you know, 18 to 24 months of construction, we're going to have to really figure out how to manage the amount of traffic and the heavy equipment and all the materials that are going to be coming in and out. That would cause a lot of disruption on our street. I am also concerned that we've talked a lot about parking tonight. The anecdote I will give you is that the Titanic had more lifeboats than was what was required at the time, but it still wasn't enough. And 38 spaces sounds great, but if you're talking 19 five-bedroom apartments, my concern is that's still not enough. I think what we don't want to have is things that make the quality of life worse on our street. And so I think the challenge here is that parking is very tight, and we need to figure out how to make sure that we've got enough space so that there isn't overflow onto the street for taking up other spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ma'am. May I have your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Susan Fink, and I live at Keystone Towers, 2000 Northeast 135th Street, Unit 907, and which is exactly right next to, next door to where the proposed building is going, possibly going to be. Ditto, and everything that our manager just said, our president of our association. I've lived on this street for nine years, and I moved to this street because it's very special, very different. As he pointed out, we have, it's one way here with a, and one way that way with a large median in the middle, which is our passive parks. And of course, the preserve at the end of the street, and it's been a very special, quiet street for the residents there. And of course, we're all concerned about the kind of traffic tie-up that's going to be caused by all the construction. And it's not that we don't think this building is wonderful and beautiful. We just have our concerns and we like to be sure that they're addressed and managed properly. So there is the parking issue, because obviously, it's not going to be enough parking with 38 spaces allowed for 18 units. And these are five-bedroom now, we've learned. We thought it was four-bedroom, it's five-bedroom units. It's obviously not going to be enough parking for these people. And we already are very stressed for parking. My husband and I have to juggle. Everybody on the block has to do this, like after 3 o'clock in the afternoon, everybody's scurrying to make sure you're either home already or that you've gotten out of your parking space so the other person in the family has a space to park when they get home. And it's a real nightmare on our street for parking. And we've been pushing and pushing to get more parking without disrupting our passive parks in the middle, of course. And it hasn't been able to happen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your time is up.
My time is up?
Yes. Councilman Burns, please step forward. Name and address. And good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Burns, 776 Northeast 125th Street. I'm just here to say that when the applicant originally came to our office, they were already aware of some of the concerns and limitations on that particular street. As you know, it's in my district and we're putting a lot of effort into Arch Creek Preserve and to protect that street from ever being opened up and making it a thoroughfare. I have to say, speaking with the mayor, I mean with their attorney, that we, they knew quite instantly that the community had to be brought up to speed to speak. So they, not only one community meeting, but two community meetings to make sure they heard back from the community. And some of the issues that we have on that street, and as the residents have said and concerns are, it's a narrow street and joint construction, the logistics of how this is all going to happen, but already, just out of the meeting that they've had, all the construction workers, and they can probably talk about more than I should, is going to be offsite. There are not going to be hundreds of workers' cars lined up up and down 135th Street. They're going to rent a space offsite to deal with that. And as it gets closer, the building department's going to work with the logistics of getting the maneuver of the road and what a construction site might look like. But they also know that they have to clean it up every night, and they know those details and those limitations. So I'm looking forward that they're going to accomplish what they need to do and make sure that, there's always going to be a little discomfort when you have a construction zone, but I'm comforted to know that they have pledged to work with the city staff 100% to make sure it's mitigated as much as possible. You know, I think we're fortunate that we're getting a building of just 18 units compared to what live local or other things may or may not come along that we would have no control over. So I hear the buzzard, and she's about to yank me away, but thank you for your consideration. I just wanted to say that they did reach out to the community, unlike your previous applicant that did it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Burns. Let me make sure that there's nobody else that wants to speak. Anyone wishes to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of the comments. Go ahead.
I would prefer to give you all the opportunity to ask questions.
I'll go ahead and open up the panel then to the comments from the Commission. Let's start with, Kevin, you may go first, if you don't mind, sir.
Well, no, I don't mind. I think it's, then I used to occasionally get to go first.
Yes.
I had my opportunity many years ago, Charlie, to be first or last, and so this is fine. I happen to like the project. I understand there are still some reservations about flooding in the street, and I think of the, and the parking is going to be a continuing issue, and it's possible. And I would encourage the developer to revisit parking to see if additional spaces could be worked into this project. At $3 million or so per unit, I would think that additional parking could be developed without breaking the bank. And I would be concerned about flooding because we know the waters are going to rise. And what we saw the last 20 years is not what we're going to see in the next 20 years. Having said that, no one can predict the future, but, you know, we develop the building on maybe a slightly higher footprint and revisit that issue. I think this is a wonderful project, and with some reservations to parking and flooding, I would be very happy to support this.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob?
Good evening. Let me say that the presentation was very thorough, and it seems like you crossed all your Ts and dotted all your Is as far as community engagement and involving them in the process. Not to beat a dead horse, I think my concerns are pretty much the same that you've already heard, as far as guests and overflow parking. For a five-bedroom, you know, a little over two spaces, it seems a little bit less than what would be needed. So I'd be interested to hear how you plan on tackling that, as well as kind of the drainage issue that is kind of citywide, but with this project, given its density, those concerns. Other than that, I think it's a great project, and I have no other comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Ms. Blommer?
Thank you so very much. Thank you for the presentation. I think that you, again, dotted your Is, crossed your Ts, and you really presented it well. I do have a concern with the parking. You know, someone who's purchasing a $3 million unit, I truly believe that they would be interested in having more parking space. The other question, a question, a few questions that I do have is, who owns Shelton Miami?
Shelton Miami Incorporated is actually a Turkish-based developer. They have exceptional Shelton and other projects that they have built in Turkey and other locations across the world. This will be their first Miami development, and because this was their first Miami development, they decided to rely upon one of, if not our best local architect, as well as very experienced civil engineers, landscape architects. They hired a zoning attorney, you know. They're very, very thoughtful, and we have been extraordinarily proactive in terms of reaching out to your staff at the very beginning of this process, reaching out to the district councilmen. I have also met with several of the other members of the council to make sure that we understand the city of North Miami and that we are not pushing you beyond where you are prepared to go.
Okay. My next question is, with the price tag of about $3 million per unit, who are we looking at? Who are we marketing to?
We are going to be marketing to individuals interested in owning waterfront property in a residential neighborhood. These are not investors who are going to try to come in under the radar and do some type of vacation rental. That is certainly not going to be the case. We think that this will be a mix of primary and secondary homes for certain individuals, and that influx of potential secondary homes is one of the reasons why we do believe that, look, if we could have had three parking spaces per unit, we would have done that. But we are triple-stacking. We are using our ground floor, right? So when you come in off of the street, there's a 12% grade up to our ground floor. And that is where you are going to meet the valet and drop off your car. The second floor, and there's a great building section if somebody wants to show that. The second floor will be a lobby, as well as a gym and a mailroom. But at the rear half of the property, our parking stackers actually extend up to the second floor. That's how we're doing the triple stack. So if you see that section right there. If we were to include more parking, it would take away two of our sellable units, because it would be an entire other floor. And when we lose those two sellable units, we cannot make the project work, unfortunately. So we racked our brains around this, and there was even a thought that we would ask for some lenience on height, and then we decided not to go that route. And to instead exceed your parking minimum, add those 10 extra spaces, and to ensure that we have this 24/7 fully-staffed parking system that is updated in real time so that we are aware of the spaces that we have available. And I just, I want to say something about the guest parking. There is no on-street parking on this street until you get to the end of the block where you have about, I don't know, maybe 10, 14 spaces.
Not a lot.
Right. And it's reserved for people who are coming from other parts of the city who want to enjoy the preserve. We do not believe that our guests are typically going to be parking in those spaces, which is the only on-street parking option. We do believe that they will be advised, it's probably best to take a ride-share to come if there is to be any type of dinner party, cocktail party, meeting, whatever, at somebody's home in this building. And we also believe that trends regarding young people wanting driver's license, young people are actually trending away from driver's licenses because shared rides like Uber and Lyft are so available, it relieves them of a little bit of responsibility. I personally, I'm a millennial, I don't understand that. I love my car, but younger people may not necessarily be as excited about having cars. And then the one other point on the parking, you're absolutely right to point out that people who can afford a unit of this caliber, especially with so many bedrooms, they may want to have more cars. They are absolutely going to have more cars. And we think that it will be a function of the market where people will understand that if they have four, five, six vehicles, that they're going to have to have private parking spaces at a private garage. There are facilities such as this, like that offer concierge, car washing, detailing, and other parking services so that the fleet of someone who owns a unit in this building would be primarily located elsewhere and that the two cars that they keep on property would be their main sort of everyday type of vehicles.
Thank you so very much for such a thorough response. My next issue with this particular project, as I stated, it's beautiful. I obviously, I think this commission is very familiar with Mr. Koby, and so we know that he's put a lot of effort into it. I do have a concern of it pricing out people who actually live here. And so I understand, and this is why I asked you who you're marketing to. And so I just want to put on the record that, while I think it's an amazing project, I do have a concern of us building units for sale that people who currently live here, who may be renters and who may be interested in owning, may not be able to afford this. Thank you so very much. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you for your very thoughtful questions.
I'd like the chair to recognize this, Mr. Peer.
I share many of the same concerns as the rest of the council, just regarding the parking for so many rooms and so little. Other than that, I think it's a great project and it's a very nice-looking building.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Peer. Ms. McDermott?
Yes. Great presentation. Thank you very much. And Koby, as always, a class act. Beautiful design, beautiful materials. It looks like it's going to be a wonderful project. But am I correct that there's going to be, how many bedrooms in this, total bedrooms in this building?
So the way the building is designed is that we're going to have basically couples, elderly folks who are selling their homes in the community, in the single-family homes, and then they want to downsize into a condominium. So what happens is that these folks want to stay in the neighborhood. And so what would happen is if I own a house in the neighborhood and I want to sell it, I come and I can live in this condominium and stay in the neighborhood. So it's for a lot of people who are downsizing, the kids have grown up and they're on their own. So the bedrooms also are being used as our, as we discussed, our home offices. What happens here is that the folks who live in the building will probably have no more than one. than one or two cars. And they will be also using their homes as, as a place where they do their offices. And then they step out and they go to a restaurant for lunch or a dinner. I have the same thing in my family. There's only 18 units in this building and we're looking at people who live in the community to basically, who are selling their homes to people who want to renovate their existing homes and bring their families up to come into this community, into our project.
I also want to follow up on, on the words of our architect. Every room in our floor plans that is not a bathroom, or a closet, or the open-floor plan, main, living, kitchen, dining area of the, of the unit, every room is labeled as a bedroom. So that might be, you know, a little bit misleading. What Kobe said is absolutely right, that, that these are spaces that could be used as playrooms, as offices, as TV rooms, as, you know, plant rooms, whatever people want, right? But they just happen to be labeled as, as bedrooms.
So, so the layout, if I can interject, the layout, how will they be sold? Will they be sold like 3-2, 3-3, 4-3? If they're not, every room is not a bedroom.
That's correct.
But, but there's a misconception here, I think, is that people are thinking that there's five bedrooms in that house, in that living facility, when in reality, you're counting the living room and any other space with a door or whatever as, as a bedroom.
No, no, no. Let me, let me clarify.
Yeah, because it is a little confusing. When I hear five bedrooms, I said, that doesn't sound right.
The, there is a main living area that we're calling the Great Room.
Right.
And that room houses the kitchen, the living area, the gathering area. We also have the primary bedroom suite, and then there are four other bedrooms. We haven't named those bedrooms, office, or playroom, or that kind of thing. They are, they are noted on the plans as bedrooms and they will be able to be sold as bedrooms. But the comment is that in actuality, when they are lived in, they may not necessarily be occupied as sleeping quarters for individual humans who live there all the time.
I see.
Yeah. Otherwise, I think it's a beautiful project and it's going to really enhance the neighborhood. It's going to, it's really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Chief, you're up, sir.
You're getting rid of the blight over there behind the marina in front of 2,135. I remember when those buildings went up. You talked about parking. Growing up in New York City in Manhattan, the pre-war co-ops that were built didn't have parking spaces. They used private garages. I remember one on 84th Street, 83rd Street. And that's the type of situation you would have here with people with disposable income. Now, the new condos, not co-ops, they're building condos over there, they had massive underground, where you could do it in New York City, in Manhattan, you have the bedrock. They had massive parking spaces. I don't see, I have to agree with you, I don't see the parking to be a problem. And in fact, you're, you're giving, you got three stacks, you're having, what, 18 apartments? How many parking spaces do you have?
38 spaces.
Yeah, I mean, that's more than what we have in here. Really, that's way out. And Kobe, which you mentioned before about the pilings, I, I think that would probably, I don't know if you guys discussed it with him, but that would kind of settle. I was at your meeting the other night and I heard, oh, we're going to have the pounding of the pilings in the building, it's going to come down and all this. And then you're also raising the seawall, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct. Yeah, we have to raise the seawall a little bit to meet the news, sea level rising based on DORM. All of our foundation are agger cast piles. All the water drainage has to remain on-site. We will have concrete tanks that collect all the water and hold it on-site. It's the law, it's code requirement for DORM, for Wassa.
Yeah, ours is even more stringent than, than the council.
Yes, sir. We are not allowed to drip one drop off of our site to the public right away.
And then with regards to, they brought up the parking for the construction, those people aren't going to be there, they're going to be off-site. Your, your construction people will rent the site and, you know, not, not a problem. I think it's a great project. Thank you. And as always, an outstanding job.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Just a couple of quick questions. It's more my curiosity than anything else. What kind of a base did you find there when you did the survey as far as silica sand, a coral bed, or?
All the soil. Let me rephrase it. Most of the soil in the state of Florida, especially where we are out east by the bay, it's all sand. That the piles that drive down like a screwdriver are called friction piles. They never reach bedrock. They are, they never touch solid. The friction holds them in place. All the high-rises you see from Miami Beach to Fort Lauderdale are all on friction piles. The homes that are built in Keystone, Point or anywhere else, you'll see they come out with a little round thing and they're dragging. That's called the agger cast piles. We will not, we shall not do the pounding piles.
So you don't have to, you don't have to dig for a foundation?
Yes, sir.
Because there's, so this is kind of, it's a fairly new technique, correct?
We have been using it for construction. Some people didn't believe in it, some people believed it. But now with the technology, it's all agger cast piles.
Yeah, I see.
And also, for example, we build Miami Beach in the historic buildings. We're doing the rally, we're doing the shore club. So we do the soil mix and we do the agger cast piles right five feet away from a building from the 1920s, right?
You know, I was just thinking, you're saying the piles, on the Brooklyn Bridge, on the Brooklyn side, they hit bedrock. On the Manhattan side, they never hit bedrock.
Exactly.
And that's how many, 100 years, 100 something?
And that's, and that's, and also what we do for liability, we put sensors on all construction sites so that we can, you know, show that we did not have any vibration or any, sensor champlain towers, all construction sites, standard have to have it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Very, very impressive. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to move the item.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Approval, seconded by Mr. Seifert, but we'll do a roll call vote. Item Secretary?
I apologize. I heard Mr. Seifert seconded it, but I didn't hear.
He seconded it. Mr. McDermott made the motion.
I made the motion that Kevin seconded.
Thank you. Okay. Chairman Ernst?
Yes.
Vice Chair McDermott?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumair?
Yes.
Commissioner H?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pierre?
Yes.
Commissioner Bob?
Yes.
Okay, the item passes unanimously.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all so much for your time and for your service. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
It's been a long week.
Mr. Chair, before, before we move, I know we want to get out of here, but I do want to, we have something, something for Commissioner Blumair. Would you present it? Sosia, please.
You look like an Olympian runner.
I hid it in the computer room. I have it now.
And this is, may we ask?
Thank you.
The occasion?
Commissioner Blumair, this will be her last service to us on the planning commission.
Oh, no, no.
After all of these years, we want to thank her for her service. And we love you and we wish you on our commission.
Thank you so very much. I am at a loss for words. I want to thank the city of North Miami for the awesome privilege of serving on this planning commission for the last four years. I want to thank all of my fellow commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair. It has been an honor to serve. I am departing from the city, but the city will remain close in my heart. And it's been an honor to serve.
Well, we will absolutely miss you. And it was a pleasure to have you serve with us. You brought a whole lot to this, this entire board and we can't find enough words to express our appreciation for, for what you, you gave us and, and your input. Thank you so much and we wish you the very best. And we will definitely miss you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Debbie, are you still with us?
I am, sir.
I have one request, if you could, for the November meeting.
Yes, sir.
They're replacing the pedestrian footbridge over the Biscayne Canal at 131st Street.
Mm-hmm.
The sign is up. Is there a design? Do we have any idea what it's supposed to look like? How the approaches will be figured? You know, in November of 2023, we had this wonderful two-day presentation in the city, brought in this whole team of people to talk about what could be done. Have we revisited that landscape plan to incorporate that into our new bridge?
I would have to check with Public Works. They're the ones who are managing this project, including the design. And would you like for them to come before you in November with an update?
Well, I certainly would.
I would, I would agree with that, Kevin.
Yes, Charlie, that's in your neighborhood.
Yes, definitely. I was surprised when I saw the sign going, oh, all right, without any knowledge that they were even planning to fix that bridge.
Well, I know it was in a five-year plan. They would get to it one day, but we didn't know what that day would be.
Maybe can that be arranged?
We will certainly reach out to the Public Works Director and request he have somebody or someone from his team present to you at your November meeting.
And hopefully the, the actual construction of it won't take as long as it did to get the totlot finished.
Yes, that, that was almost a lifetime project.
Which, which by the way, is outstanding. And I can't believe the amount of people that use it. Of course, they're coming from all parts of the city to take advantage of what's offered there. And I know some of the neighbors are already starting to complain a little bit about the overflow cars on the swales and everything. But it is a beautiful park and they did a great job. All right.
All right, Debbie. We look forward to a report that would show what they think the bridge is going to look like and what the approaches will look like and their landscaping concept.
Right. Now, do we have any old business to attend to?
No, sir.
No, new business, I guess under new business would be our, our request for the bridge update.
Yes, sir.
All right, then I call for adjournment.
I move.
We are adjourned.